Malice from Oscar. I didn't see him as a violent person. I did see him as a man of action, coiled and on a hair trigger. And that has its own dangers.
Michael Sokoloff writes for The New York Times. Profiled Oscar Pistorius for the magazine. Thanks for joining us.
You're welcome.
Finally tonight, a 70-year-old love story told in letters from President Lyndon Johnson to the woman he wanted to marry. Released today by the LBJ Presidential Library in Austin, Texas. The more than 90 letters showed the impatience of a man so taken by Claudia Alta Lady Bird Taylor that he proposed the day after they met in September 1934. And just weeks later, he wrote, "I want to always love only you. It is an important decision. It isn't being made in one night. It probably never will be yours. But your lack of decision hasn't tempered either my affection, devotion, or ability to know what I want." To which she replied, "Your letter yesterday sort of put me on the spot, didn't it, dear? All I can say in absolute honesty is, I love you. I don't know how everlastingly I love you, so I can't answer you yet." In audio recorded in 1978, Lady Bird Johnson described her dilemma at the time.
I was perfectly willing to say, let's be almost sure we'll get married in a year. But he would say, no, if you wait that long, if you don't love me enough to marry me now, you won't a year from now. And it'll do nothing but keep me in a turmoil and make life unbearable for a long time, and then we'll slip away somehow or another.
Johnson's persistence paid off. After a two-and-a-half-month courtship, the couple wed in November 1934. They remained married for 39 years until his death in 1973. For more on these letters as intimate portraits of a president and first lady, we turn to Lyndon and Lady Bird Johnson's granddaughter, Catherine Robb, and presidential historian Michael Beschloss. Welcome to you both. Catherine Robb, to you first. You were just a toddler when your grandfather passed away, so you didn't really know him, as I understand it. But what did you grow up knowing, hearing about the relationship between the two of them, their love story?
Well, you're right. I was only two and a half when he passed away, and so didn't really know him. But I fortunately got to know my grandmother very well and spent a lot of time with her, especially in the last eight or nine years of her life. And so I heard about their relationship from her. And in fact, she and I would go to dinner on Tuesday nights. We had sort of a standing Tuesday night dinner date. And one week, we decided to go to the Driscoll. They had just reopened, or they'd opened a restaurant that was sort of on the same spot where my grandmother and grandfather had their first date. And so we thought it would be fun to go there for dinner and sort of reminisce. And so we went to dinner, and I asked her to tell me about their first date and just about, you know, this, you know, young man that she met back in the '30s and sort of the whole whirlwind relationship. And I have to tell you, I was a little shocked when I, you know, I think I knew, but when I sort of heard again, you know, two and a half months, I thought, what in the world are you doing? You didn't know him. But knowing enough about him, it sort of made sense. And then reading the letters, you really see that. He's, you know, pushing her, and he thinks it should have happened yesterday, and she's the more calm, rational one, saying, you know, just sort of hold on. So knowing all of that, I can see in the two and a half months.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, what was your reaction when you read these letters?
Oh, they're just wonderful. They're, I was talking to my mother about them, and she said, oh, you know, they're just so mushy, which is just sort of a great word. It's a very us word, but a great word for them. But I love reading them because I really see so much of both of them. And they're, you know, they're a little surprising because I didn't know them at that age, and you never think of your grandparents as being, is mushy, I guess. But I think you could really see both of their personalities in terms of my grandmother's sort of adventurous spirit, but also her sort of calm influence and the slightly more rational one. And you can see my grandfather just wanting to have everything happen now. And once, you know, once he knew he wanted something to happen, he wanted it to happen yesterday. And so you see that. But you also see they're very, sort of the really sweet relationship between them, which was, which I thought was just lovely and just made me smile.
Michael Beschloss, what do these letters tell us about the relationship they went on to have for more than 30 years?
Well, from the beginning, he's basically given her, giving her what was called the Johnson treatment, which is what he used to get allies and mentors like Richard Russell in the Senate and Sam Rayburn in the House, and get people to support bills of his. I mean, 10, 10 days after the beginning of this relationship, he writes her and says, "You mean everything to me," someone he's known for 10 days. Then 26 days after, "I'm ready now for marriage. Are you?" And then the 8th of November, this is a 10-week courtship, the self-pity, he's saying, "I really hoped I could find a woman who is as affectionate as I am," using all the tricks in the book that he used in politics.
And how did she deal with that pressure? I mean, what do you see coming across from Lady Bird?
She was torn. Here is this extremely elegant, deliberate woman who likes to do things in their own time, who's very stately, and this guy is rushing at her.
Even at the age of 21?
Even at the age of 21. And he is rushing at her like a freight train, and she's torn. Finally, he says to her, "We either get married now or we never will." The next day, they did.
And Michael, what, how would you describe their relationship, their marriage?
Lyndon Johnson, it would have been impossible for him to be president or really had that career in politics if it were not for Lady Bird. From the very beginning, she was his partner. She was a hugely good judge of people. She also stabilized him. She once told me that he always has these ups and downs, and she felt that she had to pull him up when he was down and calm him down a little bit when he was too excited.
Catherine Robb, when you were reading these letters, did you think this is the kind of relationship you or somebody of your generation or your children's generation could have today?
Well, certainly, I would, I would hope in terms of just sort of the affection they showed each other and the openness they had, what I think we won't have unfortunately are those beautiful six- and seven-page letters. And, you know, we'll have texts or, you know, remembrances of phone conversations or something else.
Right.
But certainly, reading them, I thought, gosh, you know, those are the kind of letters, other than maybe them being a little too pushy in terms of the, why haven't you agreed to marry me yet? But other than that, reading them, I thought, you know, these are beautiful. These are wonderful. That's exactly the sort of thing that, you know, I think we all would like to receive. And sort of something very sweet, just laying it out there and confessing, you know, your love, and also just sort of sharing those experiences. I mean, you really, you get to see so much of them through these letters, and that was probably a really important part of their, the growth of their relationship as well. So I, I absolutely want, you know, everyone I know to get something like that.
I think that's right. And Catherine also mentioned something very important, and that is, think what we historians miss by the fact that we're going to have to write about the period that we're living in now without these kind of letters. If you knew nothing about the relationship between LBJ and Lady Bird, and only, the only thing you read was these letters, you'd have an enormously good sense of what happened.
Letters, just quickly, Michael Beschloss, letters after they were married?
Letters after they were married, we see them, but LBJ was a lot more busy. Some of the most revealing things, actually, are some of the, he taped Lady Bird without her knowledge sometimes during the presidency on the telephone, which I would not recommend for any marriage, but she took it with good humor. But they had this marvelously layered relationship. She was, through all this, a very strong woman.
We are so delighted to have both of you with us on this Valentine's Day. Michael Beschloss and Catherine Robb, the granddaughter of President Lyndon Johnson and Lady Bird Johnson. Thank you both.
Thanks, Judy.
Thank you. And in keeping with the romantic holiday theme, we look at online dating sites. Can the perfect algorithm lead to love? NewsHour political editor Christina Bellantoni asks our daily download team. That's on our homepage.
Cannot top that. Again, the major developments of the day. American and U.S. Airways announced plans to merge and create the world's largest airline if regulators and a bankruptcy judge approve. And Senate Republicans blocked a vote on the nomination of Chuck Hagel to be Secretary of Defense. And that's the NewsHour for tonight. I'm Jeffrey Brown.
And I'm Judy Woodruff. We'll see you online and again here tomorrow evening with Mark Shields and David Brooks, among others. Thank you, and good night.
Major funding for the PBS NewsHour has been provided by BNSF Railway.
The William and Flora Hewlett Foundation, working to solve social and environmental problems at home and around the world.
And with the ongoing support of these institutions and foundations.
This program was made possible by the Corporation for Public Broadcasting. And by contributions to your PBS station from viewers like you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome all of you here tonight and all of you that are home watching. Thanks for watching and being interested in the activities of your city. The first item is the roll call, please. Councilmember Norton?
Here.
Councilmember Story?
Here.
Councilmember Batorff?
Here.
Councilmember Termini?
Here.
And Mayor Harland?
Here.
Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item tonight is a presentation by the Human Care Alliance of Good Neighbor Award to representatives of the Capitola Village Residents Association. Good evening.
Good evening. Whereas the Capitola Village Residents Association represents residents of the city of Capitola residing in the neighborhoods of the Upper Village, Depot Hill, Riverview Terrace, the Jewel Box, and the Central Village, including the Fanmar area. And whereas the Capitola Village Resident Association membership consists of residents of the neighborhood that are most affected by the conditions of the Central Village. And whereas the goal of this Capitola Village Residents Association is to follow issues of importance to the quality of life of residents and to participate effectively in the political process when the Capitola City Council makes decisions that affect it. And whereas the Capitola Village Residents Association is committed to gathering input from Capitola Village residents and communicating with city leadership. And whereas the Capitola Village Residents Association has an important role in sharing knowledge, experience, and understanding of the issues affecting the community through the interactions with residents, business owners, and city leadership. And whereas the association held a charity fundraising garage sale as part of Capitola's citywide garage sale on April 14, 2012, with proceeds benefiting the Human Care Alliance, a collaboration of nonprofit health and human services agencies. And whereas the association members generously donated time, talent, goods, and services to performing the good works in the service of their fellow community members and...
And whereas the Human Care Alliance members Meals on Wheels, California Gray Bears, Seniors Council, and Senior Network Services collaborated on producing emergency preparedness kits for homebound elderly residents of the city of Capitola. And whereas the residents of the emergency preparedness kits now possess a practical and meaningful symbol of the Capitola Village Residents Association members' commitment and dedication to the health and safety of their fellow neighbors. And whereas the Capitola Village Residents Association serves as a model to residents of other cities, towns, and neighborhoods in teamwork, cooperation, and community. Now, therefore, we members of the Human Care Alliance of Santa Cruz County, California, do hereby recognize the Capitola Village Residents Association as an organization of responsible stewards of the quality of life in our local community, as well as safe keepers of their neighbors. We urge residents of the Santa Cruz County to appreciate the example of camaraderie and generosity of the Capitola Village Residents Association members and to be inspired by their proud legacy of service in action. Presented this 14th day of February in the year 2013 by Meals on Wheels, the California Gray Bears, Seniors Council, and Senior Network Services.
One other member of the board. Thank you very much.
Another member, and also worked very, very hard on our garage sale, so he's gonna, yes, he was. Thank you so much.
I wanted to thank the people that, the residents of Capitola and the members of the CVRA that worked on the garage sale. Molly Ordin, Gina Valas, James Garcia, Lou and Judith Feinman, Darcy Horton, Linda Wadley, Ed Batorff, and myself. And Janet and I delivered, actually, some of the emergency packets to some of the seniors. I just want to say, we had a wonderful time. We all had a great time at the garage sale. And I can tell you that when Janet and I delivered the emergency packs, I have never seen so many people thrilled to see me in my entire life. I have to tell you, it was a lovely experience. So anyway, we plan now to make this an annual event. And so when the next garage sale comes up, if anyone, you know, wants to clean some stuff out of their garage or help out, they can go to capitolascvra.org and find out where we'll be, and we'll be happy to help them clean out their garage. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's a great organization.
Tell us what's in the emergency bag.
What?
Tell us what's in the emergency bag.
Oh, she has one.
She forgot me.
I'm Pam Rhodes, and I'm board member of Gray Bears. And I was asked by Tim to bring in the bag to show what was in it. So I'm going to pass it around. And then you can see there's, really, everybody was thrilled to get it. to get it, especially the bag, now that Capitola's banning bags.
Yes.
So, anyway.
Thank you, that's great.
And I'm also a resident of Capitola, and I'm very proud to be part of Capitola. I think it's a wonderful place, and I'll like to be part of this again, so, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For the listening audience, what's... Okay. There's quite a few things in there. We also delivered eighty-eight bags to all the people that can't get out of their homes, so, and we also deliver three hundred and fifty bags to the seniors in the area.
Thank you very much for all your good work.
You like Chilwell's and Dr. Strangelove.
Quality one apple sauce? Quality one. Maybe I have an almond. Various injury. Personal papers. Okay, we have a number of food items to get you through a few days. Water bottle. Information to Capitola seniors. These are special emergency response phone numbers. Looks like there's one Meals Ready to Eat Military Style Beef Raviolis and a Senior Service Magnet, so...
And most importantly, a reusable bag.
And a lovely reusable bag, so...
Thank you very much. And who put the bags together?
Gray Bears, no? Gray Bears put the bags together?
Actually, there was a member from the Wells Fargo Capital Grant who came and helped pack the bags.
I'll take it back.
That's great. Thank you all very much. Great activity and a great cause and a useful service to the seniors. Okay, the next item is a report on closed session. Mr. Beresoni?
Thank you, Mayor Harland. The items that the council discussed in closed session this evening are those listed on the council's posted agenda, pages one and two. The council met briefly with its labor negotiators, Jamie Goldstein and Lisa Murphy, concerning upcoming negotiations with Santa Cruz, Capitola Police Officers Association. They provided the council with the status of those negotiations and took instructions from the council with regard to those negotiations, but took no reportable action in closed session. The council received a status report from the city manager and city attorney with regard to the city of Capitola's lawsuit against Lexington Insurance Company pertaining to property damage that the city is seeking an insurance recovery from Lexington. Again, we provided a status report. The council took no reportable action in closed session. The mayor will be reporting on the settlement of the Calvert-Saldana Truck Insurance, David Ross, American Alternative Insurance Corporation, California Capital Insurance Company, Kawahara, and Foremost Insurance Company cases, which are all lawsuits arising out of the March 2011 pipe failure incident where people in Capitola sustained property damage and sued the city as a result of that incident. Those lawsuits have been settled, and the mayor will report the details of those settlements shortly. The council received a short status report on the pending litigation, Trodel versus the city of Capitola pertaining to the Pacific Cove Mobile Home Park, but took no reportable action in closed session. We just provided a status report on that matter. The council discussed the potential acquisition of the 401 Capitola Avenue project with the city manager, who is their negotiator in that transaction. Councilmembers Norton and Botorf were disqualified from participating in that conversation due to conflicts of interest and were not present for that discussion. There were no, the council, remaining council members provided the city manager with instructions concerning those negotiations, but took no reportable action in closed session. The council also received a status report on the dispute between the county of Santa Cruz and the city of Capitola pertaining to responsibility for the Noble Gulch pipe failure. That's a matter of potential litigation. The council did not provide city staff with direction to initiate litigation over that matter with the county. The county also, I mean, the city council also heard from the city manager and city attorney with regard to the property tax administration fee dispute with the city of Capitola, the city of, county of Santa Cruz and the city of Capitola dispute, as other cities in the county are having the same dispute with the county. The council has previously authorized litigation against the county concerning this matter. We provided the council with a status report on settlement negotiations, and the council took no reportable action in closed session. Finally, the council had to consider initiating litigation against the California State Department of Finance regarding prorated share of interest on city redevelopment agency loans. This pertains to the dissolution of redevelopment agency by the state of California. The council did not direct city staff to initiate litigation against the state of California concerning that matter. Finally, the city council heard from city staff, the city manager and the city attorney with regard to the tort claim of Ray Ellen Leonard, which is on the council's consent agenda this evening for denial. The council received a status report on that matter, but took no reportable action in closed session. And that's the end of my oral report, and it would be appropriate now for the mayor to summarize the settlement and the lawsuits that I referred to.
Thank you, thank you. Well, we have some good news. In March of 2011, the city of Capitola experienced a catastrophic event when a large storm drain pipe that transmits water from Noble Gulch between Bay Avenue and Capitola Avenue failed. The failure of the pipe caused significant damage to the Capitola Village area, including businesses and residences. As a result, several lawsuits were filed against the city and the county of Santa Cruz seeking financial relief. All of these lawsuits have now been settled with the city and the county of Santa Cruz, sharing the cost evenly. The city's 50 percent share of the settlements are as follows. Kevin Calvert DDS and Pamela Calvert $75,000, Katie Saldana $6,000, David Ross Carousel Taffy Morro Bay Incorporated $12,500, Village Mouse Thomas Kincaid Gallery $47,500, American Alternative Insurance Corporation Central Fire Protection District of Santa Cruz County $72,500, California Capital Insurance Company $87,500, Trustees of John T. Kawahara and Barbara J. Kawahara $15,000, Foremost Insurance Company $50,468.27, and Truck Insurance So we're very happy to have this behind us. And the total was four hundred and some thousand dollars.
And Madam Mayor, I will point out that these, the city is insured through a joint partnership with other jurisdictions, and these expenses are being paid out of our third part, out of our insurance fund.
Fund.
Not from city funds.
Not, not general fund money. Okay, the next item is additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any? Then the next item is public comments. Would anyone like to comment on anything not on the agenda? If it's on the agenda, please wait till we get to that item, then you're welcome to speak. Good evening.
Good evening. Back again, Valentine's Day. Let's love the earth and nature and our children and do everything we can to see that it's a safe and healthy environment for all. And one way is to remove these sources of radio frequency microwave radiation from the Wi-Fi and other wireless technology by having wired technologies. You may get tired of hearing me, but the problem goes on. I'd like to invite other people from the community to come down and give the city council direction. As much as you hear me, it's a minuscule amount, a little bleep, in the massive advertisements of the wireless industry on the benefits of their products. I can't compete with the TV ads and all. And I keep thinking of that article, Why Our World Is Electroplutive, and it says that the military uses and develops something, you can be sure it's effective and lethal, and industrial capitalists have a way of repackaging these products, these gizmos, so that they appear beneficial, but the lethal properties remain, and the evidence of harm from microwave radiation is well researched and documented, though not well publicized. Now, on February 5th, a week ago Tuesday, on Your Own Health and Fitness, Cindy Sage of Sage Associates was interviewed about the BioInitiative Report Update. The original report came out in 2007 on the biological effects of this radiation and is now categorized as a carcinogen, Class 2B carcinogen by the World Health Organization. It's a toxin, and this report has twenty-nine authors from ten different countries. You can access it by bioinitiative.org. The study showing biological damage at much lower exposure levels than the 2007 report behaves just like a toxin. There's a chapter in there on Wi-Fi in schools, on the links to autism. The symptoms of autism are very parallel to the symptoms of radio frequency microwave exposure. They find that children exposed as in fetal stage and using cell phones early on have developmental and developmental problems and a lot of negative effects. Let's see what else. A book was referred to by Martha, Martha Herbert on autism, and there's a whole chapter on that in the report. So I would urge you to look at that, to go back to a wired system and do whatever you can to recall these microwave meters of PG&E, these biohazard meters.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Good evening.
Happy Valentine's Day. My name is Jerry Totes. I'm a resident of a neighboring city, SoCal, and I'm here representing a newly formed organization whose purpose is to build a coalition of important and responsible elements of the community, yourselves, law enforcement, first responders, educational organizations, and like-minded groups, to work toward the reduction in the appalling amounts of gun violence that we see in our society today. I personally have been working with law enforcement and first responders to reach out to them to begin building this coalition. The name of our organization is the Community Against Gun Violence. So my purpose today is to just introduce ourselves to you. I want to make a few, just brief statements to give you a little bit more information about what we do. The date of the Newtown, Connecticut, shooting at Sandy Hook Elementary School was December 14, 2012. On that day, Adam Lanza shot and killed twenty-six people, twenty of whom were children six years old or younger, by firing between fifty and 100 rounds of ammunition at close range. Upon being confronted by first responders, he then took his own life by shooting himself in the head. Since that date, exactly two months ago, in the central coast California region, in seven cities that span the short distance relatively between Fremont and King City, fifteen more homicides have taken place. One last weekend in the city of Santa Cruz, downtown Santa Cruz. Thirty-two-year-old Polly Silva was shot to death outside of the Red Room in downtown Santa Cruz on that day. These horrifying statistics have not gone unnoticed by the majority of Americans. In our state, with its reputation for strict regulation of guns, weapons still find their way into the hands of criminals and deranged individuals who would use them to harm or kill other people. At the state level, right now, an encouraging initiative is taking place. Ten new bills have been introduced into the state senate, and they have been proposed to deal with the loopholes that contribute to the flow of guns and ammunition into the waiting hands of dangerous individuals. With your permission, I'm going to submit for your examination a newsletter that was published by the senate pro tem of the state senate, Darrell Steinberg, in which ten, these ten bills are outlined, just brief, brief statements about them, so you know what they deal with. Basically, they're all common sense, doable things that we can do to reduce gun violence, one of which, just in order to pique your interest, is something that really excites me. We have a system in California that was put into place in 2001 called the, the acronym is the APPS. That stands for Armed and Prohibited Persons System. This system uses technology to coordinate cross-referencing of five databases, the purpose of which is to identify individuals who purchased weapons, including assault weapons, legally as early as 1996, but who have then become prohibited persons. Prohibited persons are people who are felons, severely mentally ill people, people who have a history of domestic violence or restraining orders, or wanted persons, clearly people we don't want to have with guns. So people who have become members of this list, been put on this list, or in the process of being put on this list, are identified through this system, the APPS system. This then empowers the Department of Justice at the state level and local law enforcement to go after people that should not have weapons. This is very effective legislation, and it has actually been used for statewide sweeps. Hundreds of individuals who are on this prohibited persons list have been apprehended in possession of weapons. Thousands of weapons have been taken away from these individuals, and hundreds of thousands of rounds of ammunition have been taken away in these initiatives.
Your three minutes is up, but maybe you could leave your contact information here?
Right, I will.
And we can, we can stay in touch, and you might want to stay for the item that we're going to be discussing later on tonight, which is item eight, nine B. We're going to be talking about some gun regulations in Capitola.
Great, let me leave these two documents.
Do you have, is your name and phone number on there?
I've got that on there. I've got all the contact information.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Great, okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, then we will go to council and staff announcements. Staff announcements, council announcements?
Just at the Santa Cruz Public Libraries, and we had our first meeting that I attended last night. Thank you, Sam. It's great to be back on there. They're having their, the big Reed program going on. Please contact www.santacruzereads.org at several of the branches, and at the main branch, they'll be having, this, this year, the grant is going to be on John Steinbeck, with some really interesting performances and discussions. Thank you.
Great. Guinness?
I just have an RTC announcement. That's the Regional Transportation Commission has hired an engineer to actually supervise in the retrofitting of the railroad bridges along the 31-mile corridor. So that process is moving forward, and the bridges will be retrofitted within a year's time. So we're moving towards our rail trail, so it's good news.
Good. Michael and I had lunch with two board members from the SoCal School District, Lynette Hamby and Tori, and, and they asked about some money that they gave us for a Safe Route to School grant that they received.
The grant money came to us, I believe.
To us.
Yes, we have that money, and they are, as soon as they want, they can come get it. We've had it for years.
Well, we're, we're supposed to do something with it. There's some requirement, it's supposed to be passed out of the city, and we're supposed to do some public works project.
Steve, Steve knows about this.
He does. At least that's what their, that's what the board's understanding is, that it's something that we do, our public works, but they do it.
No, there's, well, there's, there's a Safe Route to School grant, which they actually applied for the grant, we co-signed it for them because it had to come from the city, and it's a grant that their assistant superintendent is working on to fulfill their needs. So we're helping them, we're assisting them, but it's a project that is... So we're helping them, we're assisting them, but it's a project that is initiated and being run by the school district. We do have $40,000 from them that they gave us as part of the Jade Street School.
Different stuff.
For graphic calling, yeah.
What, is there any requirement on that grant as far as, does it have to be a?
It's for a specific study that they're going to do for all the schools in the school district to determine what impediments there are to walking and riding bikes to schools.
Then perhaps we should let the superintendent know that his board members are misinformed.
That was one of the things we talked about, was our concern about the traffic, cars lined up in the morning and in the afternoon to pick up the kids and drop them off. And was there anything else we could do to encourage kids to walk to school and bike to school? And it is a challenge because of where it's located and so forth, and especially over in SoCal, where you have to go underneath the freeway. But it would sure be nice to do something about those, that the traffic that's caused during those hours. And, you know, maybe some more carpooling or something. And they, Michael said that they, the Home and School Club did try to get some, a carpool program together, and it didn't go very far, but, you know, maybe they could try again. And I made a pitch for our trading, the Monterey Park for Jade Street, and they laughed and thought they were quite amused by that. But I said, no, I'm serious. You know, I mean, it would, to be able to have that, know that that recreation facility is going to be there forever would be wonderful. And if we could, if we could settle that now rather than wait till the future, if we could know that we're going to, we could buy it, trade it, whatever, make it some kind of a deal so that we can keep Jade Street, the rest of Jade Street Park as truly an active, busy community park for the whole area, that would be fabulous.
And in uncharacteristic move, Stephanie was the bad cop, I was the good cop, because I came in behind her and said, well, how about a 99-year lease? So it was really good.
Yeah, we said, we'll throw in the gymnasium, but.
Stephanie just wanted it. She goes, we have a deed.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think it's, you know, it's still, it's worth continuing to put it out there, that, you know, we would like to have it. And somehow, and we have land we can trade them for, and it's right next to their school that they can use for whatever they want. And so, but there's, what didn't seem to be interest. So I don't know what's going to happen there, but. And what was the other thing we were going to ask about?
Oh, just the traffic on Monterey. They were, they did not realize that that Park Avenue was a county project, causing all the traffic to go down Monterey.
Oh.
So we cleared that up. It was, it was a good meeting. All we got a lot done.
Yeah, good. Okay, next, any other council items? Do you have any, Ed, do you have any announcements? On boards, commissions, and committee appointments, I would like to appoint Stephen Ross to the Parking and Traffic Advisory Committee. Michael and I met him and had a very nice visit with him a couple weeks ago, and he lives on El Camino Medio. And his full name is James Stephen Ross. He's not here tonight, is he? I invited him to come if he wanted to come, but said he didn't have to. He could come another time and introduce himself to everyone if he likes. And he's been a part-time resident for 17 years and a full-time resident for four years, and very familiar with the village, and I think he'll be a good addition to that committee. So I'd like to appoint him to that, and I'd like to continue the appointments for the seniors council. We had three applicants, and I interviewed them all, and one just dropped out and said that he was offered a part-time job, and so he's not available. And then there's another person that I'm interested in, that is interested in serving in that group, so I'd like to come back on the next meeting with that. And I'd like to appoint Danielle Uharriet for the city, for the Oversight Committee as a city representative. And when do they meet next? This is the committee, this is the committee that's trying to sort out the last part of the redevelopment agency.
Next Friday, I believe.
It's coming up relatively shortly. I think it's next week, so the appointment is timely.
Okay, great. That'll be great. The next item, if there aren't any other committee appointments, is the.
Mayor, do we need a vote on the traffic and parking appointment?
I'll move to affirm that appointment.
Soya?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The consent calendar, and this is a group of relatively minor items that are taken with one motion unless anyone would like to pull an item from the audience or from the council. Would anyone, and the audience like to pull an item for separate discussion?
I'm going to need to abstain on A for the, some of the minutes.
Oh, okay.
Other than that.
Okay. Would anyone else like to pull any item?
I'll move the consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And then you have some abstentions for the meetings you worked here.
Just for A.
For the.
Meetings I wasn't on, on council.
Okay. The September, October.
September, October, November.
November.
And then the special meeting on October 11th.
Okay.
Usually my screen pops up.
Okay, very good. The next item is 9A, Discussion of, Consideration of Modification of the Cities of Capitola's Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 17.39, Plan Development. And this is, these are all public hearings, so anyone in the audience is welcome to speak on these.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and council members. At your last city council meeting, the council requested that we put an item on tonight's agenda to talk about our plan development ordinance and how it works. As part of your packet, the city attorney has prepared a revised ordinance which dealt with the issue that brought plan developments to our attention, and that was the fact that the planning commission's decisions when plan developments take place are not appealable to the city council. But it was my understanding tonight, we wanted to talk a little more about plan developments in general, so I thought I would give you a little bit of history. There are actually 16 planned development projects here in Capitola. They range from large residential projects such as Capitola Shores and Capitola Knolls to some quite small projects. If you look at the city's zoning map, it's a little hard to see on this screen, but all the areas that are sort of the purply-blue color are plan developments within the city. One of the smaller ones we have is, there was a flag lot on 42nd Avenue, which was a little over 15,000 square feet, and there was a planned development that took place there about 10 years ago, providing three residential units. As I mentioned, we have some large ones like the Capitola Knolls Project. A fairly recent project was off of Capitola Road in Heritage Lane, and it was a subdivision for a small lot subdivision. And this is the Capitola Beach Villas, which was one of the larger plan developments that have taken place, and the only one that involved any kind of commercial activity. This project has commercial on the ground floor on 41st Avenue. Here is another example on Windward Lane, right behind the new hotel that was built up on 41st Avenue. The projects that we have done here in Capitola typically have been residential sites, I think mainly because Capitola does not have anything in its zoning ordinance that allows for what are referred to as small lot subdivisions. The item that brought this to our attention is the site on 38th Avenue, where we had a proposal for a seniors rental project that was going in on this property. The, as I mentioned, you know, this is the only zoning district where the planning's commission's decisions are not appealable to the city council. We do have a draft ordinance that deals with that particular issue. I think this is the most complex of the zoning districts, not only for the decision-makers, but also for the developers, because there is not a set of rules that are followed. It's not like if you're building a house on a single-family lot, you know that if you have a 15-foot front setback and, you know, 20% rear yard and side yard setbacks, and you're only 27 feet high, then we say, well, this project conforms to all of our requirements, and typically, we recommend approval of projects that conform. When you're dealing with a planned development, the rules go out the window for the city as well as the developer. So it's a matter of sitting down and working on a project together and coming up with something that the city feels would be a good project for the city of Capitola to have. It's going to be, I think, an important tool for the city in the future when you start dealing with areas on 41st Avenue where you're going to want to talk about some mixed projects, residential above and commercial below, because those are going to be infill projects, and you're going to have to have some creativity and flexibility to get those projects approved, which it's hard to have with standard zoning-type rules. As I mentioned, and I thought I should do this, the project on 38th is the one which brought the problem with the planning commission's decision to our attention, but several people have said, well, why would a project like that be considered as a planned development? And as you are aware, in the ordinance itself, it says that projects are supposed to be on four acres or larger unless you can make certain findings. And one of those findings is that is referred to as land use. And in this particular case, the city had already designated this site to be a higher-density residential site when you approved your 2007 to 2014 housing element. So that made this site unique. And this site was also called out specifically in the 41st Avenue Revisioning Plan, which came to the Planning Commission and City Council as part of our general plan update. And the project was going to be required to implement some of the new goals that were in the revisioning plan, such as a nine-foot wide sidewalk. So from a staff point of view, there was adequate evidence to make a finding that the project should go forward as a planned development, even though it was smaller than four acres. So I don't know which direction the council wants to take with this. As I said, we have provided you with a draft ordinance that would eliminate the problem of the planning commission's decision not being appealable. The process for that is that if you give us direction to go forward with that ordinance, it would go to the planning commission at their meeting on March 27th for a hearing. It would then come back to the city council on March 28th for you to consider and have a first reading. Would then come back to you, I believe it's April 11th, for a second reading, and would become effective in the portions of Capitola that are not in the coastal zone 30 days after that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about our plan development ordinance or.
Mike? Yes, sir.
It seems like, the last time we discussed this, we talked about eliminating PD completely, but you've given us some pretty good ideas of why PD exists. My question for you is, how can we make the findings stronger and more black and white? Because it seems that you're in favor of keeping the PD. What can we do to make it better, albeit, you know, I think we need to make it appealable to the council because it's just our government process, you know, the democratic process. But what does the Community Development Department think about this?
I think you're absolutely correct. It would be nice to see the findings that are made be a little clearer about how this project benefits the community. And one example would be that, you know, projects that provide higher-density housing that are close to transit centers, that projects that, you know, provide more of a benefit to the community. And you absolutely, you're correct, you absolutely do want to keep your plan development ordinance because you have 16 of these developments in town, and you don't want to eliminate the ordinance and have all of these projects become non-conforming because they routinely need to be maintained, updated. If there was a fire in one of the buildings and you completely got rid of the ordinance, you wouldn't have a mechanism for dealing with a number of those issues.
But you're still talking about very subjective findings. Is there anything, any way we can codify? I know we have the six-acre rule.
Right. One of the suggestions.
What do we have that's six acres? And we're pretty much past that.
Yeah. One of the suggestions that I made in the staff report, and I think is a good one, is for the council to consider having planned developments, but to keep them closer, more closely connected with the surrounding zoning, because you do re-dzone the property with a planned development, is to say that the planned development needs to conform to the zoning requirements and can only deviate by 20% or, you know, a number that you would pick.
But then how does that change, you know, rather than the deviation, which we can take as a, you know, a zoning variance?
Right.
How does that deviate from just making them part of the zone that they're in? It seems like what you just said flies in the face of keeping it. You follow what I'm saying?
I don't follow it.
Saying that, you know, you can have a PD, but it has to conform to the surrounding zone, then it's part of, it's the surrounding zone. It's like, why is it there?
What we're trying to do is provide you, as a council and the planning commission, some flexibility on projects. I mean, it is difficult to write zoning regulations that apply to all development. An example I would use, if you look at 41st Avenue, there are lots up there that are 10 acres, there are lots up there that are 5,000 square feet. And if you read the zoning ordinance, when you talk about height and setbacks, those same rules apply to a variety of different property sizes.
Should we leave this to the general plan committee? A rewrite of the PD, or should we act on it ourselves? I'm trying to think if the, if the G-PAC is a better place for this to unfold, and perhaps we should just take care of the appeal change in the ordinance.
I personally believe that what you should do is take care of the appeal question right now. When we came back to the council, I believe it was in January, and talked about some of the changes that are going to be considered overall in our zoning ordinance, I think that would be the appropriate time if you want to make other changes to your plan development ordinance, to make those at that time.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Susan, the original language in the ordinance that, in essence, made a planning commission's denial of a PD application unappealable to the council, was there some research about why that was done, what the thinking was at the time? And I don't know if there were council members who were here at the time that could maybe shed some light on whether that was intentionally done that way, or it was an accident.
I talked to a couple of people who were on the city council in 1975, when the ordinance was adopted. And how it was explained to me is that there had been a number of developments that had been approved in Capitola, particularly on Park Avenue, that the community was upset about. And so a decision was made to become much more restrictive on how planned developments could be approved. And so it was intentional on their part that both the planning commission and the city council had to approve a project because they felt it was a significant community issue. It was not a mistake or an oversight. That was the intent of the ordinance that was passed at that time.
May I follow up? It sounds like the intention was to, I think, create a high threshold.
Correct.
For making these significant changes to the zoning requirements of the time. But it seems like the direction that we're moving in tonight would, in essence, eliminate that higher threshold and make it easier to. that higher threshold and make it easier to approve a PD development.
It would certainly change it by allowing the City Council to override a decision that the Planning Commission has made. The reason that I would recommend that you do that is that this is the only item in our current zoning ordinance where the Planning Commission is the final decision-making body. We have a system in place for all planning-related decisions. For example, the Community Development Director is allowed to make certain decisions, but the Community Development Director's decisions are always appealable to the Planning Commission and ultimately to the City Council, which is the elected body. All our other Planning Commission decisions, and I think they make some quite significant decisions regarding major subdivisions, some, you know, larger commercial projects, those are all appealable to the City Council. And I think having that, a consistent city policy that the City Council is sort of, "This is where the buck stops," group makes some sense.
Okay. Thank you. Can I, one follow-up question? Just the timing of this ordinance change and the 38th Avenue application that we have in front of us, is it the intention that once we pass this ordinance and we have the second reading, that that project would go back to the Planning Commission and then follow the path back to us-
That is correct.
-and not just come direct to us under simply this ordinance change?
Right. It would need to go back to the Planning Commission and be considered under the revised ordinance.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yes.
You know, I read the ordinance a little differently in the interpretation of it, in that I think, I think when I read it, the intent is, is that not that the council couldn't appeal this project to the council level or bring it to it. It was said that the decision of the Planning Commission, such as almost any building development project we have, is a decision of the Planning Commission. But I don't read anywhere in the ordinance that says that a council member can't appeal it to the council level, because there is nothing else in this government that says that, when I, when I read how it's written. So-
I'll ask the city attorney to-
Okay.
-to respond to that, but I think we have come to a different conclusion from reading it, because it says that both the Planning Commission and the City Council have to, you know, approve the project. If the Planning Commission denies it, then there is no mechanism within the planned development ordinance or any of the other parts of the zoning ordinance that allow for the council then to override that decision and approve it on their own.
Okay. I'll accept that, but in essence, there is no other place in Capitola city government that doesn't allow the last say to be the City Council.
That's correct.
That's right. And until this has been uncovered, since 1975, nobody's ever tested that or even questioned that.
Well, in, in doing our research, there had never been a planned development that had been denied by the Planning Commission before.
Okay.
So I think that's the reason this issue had not come up before this.
Okay. Susan, wasn't the auto dealership a PUD?
I don't, I don't believe that the auto dealership was a planned development.
Okay. What about Brown's Ball Ranch? Was it a PUD?
No.
And the mall wasn't either?
No.
Okay. Okay. That answers my questions. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this issue? I'm going to open the public hearing now. If not, I'll bring it back to the council. I wanted to look at this map, because I was not on the council when we did the Capitola Shores. But I know that after that was built, the council said, gee, that's really cramming a lot of condos into one space. When we, when the next one came about, the Capitola Knolls over by Kennedy, they decided to have more open space. And so it's-
It's much nicer.
Much nicer. Much nicer. More grassy knolls and landscaping and softer and, you know, it's really nice. I'm not crazy about, about PDs. I know I've supported some of them before, and they seem to sort of make sense, but, you know, we're, we're all built out now. We don't hardly have any, any room left, so I'm worried that stuff is just going to get squeezed in and-
Madam Mayor, I'd like to present, you know, a motion, that is, for the staff to, for us to adopt the ordinance change, allowing the PDs to be appealed to us, and at the same time, provide direction to staff to bring us back when we do the general plan, some really specific findings that we can all stand on when it comes to a PD, because we don't want it just to be an excuse for a developer to get more, to squeeze more out of the property.
But that's what they've done.
Because it, it has been done that way.
Yeah.
And by the same token, it's been done the other way. I know that as much as there have been PDs that I liked and PDs I didn't, the one on 42nd was a, was a real tricky one, because if it were just according to the zoning of the area, they could have actually put more on there.
Mm-hmm.
And the PD reduced the number of units, but made the units larger and more single-family-like. So, like I said, this is such a gray area, I think both bodies, planning and the council, need some good, solid findings that we can look at and compare and, and make a decision. But my motion is to amend the ordinance to allow appeal to the City Council.
I'll second that motion with discussion.
I just want to follow up with that on 42nd. They could have put probably four or five houses there under RM, which is what it was zoned, but that developer was, was not being very cooperative and was threatening to put an apartment complex there. He said, "Well, if you don't like this, you know, if I don't get this, then I'll put a large apartment complex there," which is just sort of blackmail.
Well, it is, and yet, that's a hole in our zoning too, because he could have put 19 units there as an RM, which we didn't want to see there. So it's really a rock and a hard place.
Not 19 single-family units. That would have been apartments.
No, it was, they were all connected, so it would be 19 dwelling units, which is not what we wanted to see there. So, again, we don't, neither the Planning Commission or the council want to be put in a position where PD is the lesser of the two evils. That's madness.
Right. That's correct. And one of the things that's going to happen with this whole new zoning ordinance that's coming before you as part of the general plan is, you know, trying to clean up a lot of the development issues related to multifamily. And so I agree with your approach. I think it's a good one. It's better to look at all of that in a larger context.
Because when we did the development on Warf Road, where the schoolteacher lived, and they came in and put six houses, I think, but they were pushing for seven. And, you know, you get into these, you know, struggles about it, and people, their biggest complaint in town is parking in traffic and parking in traffic, and yet we're, you know, we squeezed too many units in some of these lots. And the other interesting PD is the one on SoCal. I guess they're the condos along the creek on Warf Road. I didn't remember that that was a PD. But there's, you know, there's some that have worked out. I supported the one on Capitola Road, because it's on a commercial street, and it was between the Chinese restaurant and the Chinese restaurant.
And it has worked.
And it's okay.
It's worked perfectly.
I'd like to see more landscaping there. But, you know, it's, you know, some of them have worked out okay, but I just don't like them anymore. They, it's, we have squeezed in too many units in some of these places, and, and since we are all built out, we're just going to be squeezing more in, you know, where people may not like them. Dennis?
I think there's appropriate places for a PUD, and there's inappropriate places. And that may be one way to look at this new regulations. For instance, in the CC zone, it may be more adaptable than it is in RM or in, or in R1. So maybe in selective, I think that we put huge harness on 41st Avenue in the future by taking the PUD development process up. And I'll tell you, an example of that is the Dean's property. The Dean's property, they own H&R Block building, they own the old Blockbuster building, and they own Capitola Restaurant, whatever it's called.
Right.
So there's a perfect example. We have one property owner on four, actually four parcels there, that have a, have a potential of designing in an excellent project in there that won't really work under any single zoning ordinance as it stands now. Even the CC doesn't work with it. So keeping, keeping, keeping the PUD development standards available in that, in, in the CC zone, I think would be a benefit. And I'll tell you, we just, we have to accept the fact that we are going to see along 41st Avenue corridor, an increased density, increased usage along that corridor. It's going to happen. There's demand for that, and we want to maintain that as a regional shopping center. And if you stymie it, and you hold it to today's standards, you will not have that in the future. We will lose that shopping center. We will lose that whole avenue as a, as a destination point. Now, you come across the creek, I have a whole different opinion on that. You know, I don't think it necessarily belongs along Bay Avenue, but, or certainly not Warf or any of the other residential mix areas, but I think it fits well into high commercial areas. And so, in considering that, I think Mike's motion's good. Let it take the general plan update process. This gives an opportunity for, for the PUD to live in its own form. And if I'm not mistaken, Susan, we actually, as a jurisdiction, encourage people to go into that, as staff do. I mean, it isn't always their choice. A lot of times, it is actually staff that actually encourages them to take that, that path. True?
Well, I mean, it's ultimately the decision of the developer of what they would like to do. As I mentioned on this 38th Avenue project, because we're talking about that one, you know, a decision had already been made by the city that they wanted that site to be higher-density residential. That's how you met the requirements in your housing element to provide enough housing units within the community. So there are circumstances where the city has made a decision that they think the planned development is the appropriate path for someone to use to, you know, accommodate not only their goals, but goals that the city has established.
If we moved along the lines that Michael has suggested, what's the timeline for bringing back, you know, more specific requirements for a finding?
That would happen later on in the fall of 2013, when you're going to be getting your new zoning ordinance. It will be happening this year, but later in the fall.
Thank you.
Any comments?
You have a couple of comments. Primarily, I do support Michael's motion for the, for the amendment. I mean, I see this as an anomaly in the code. The council should have the final say, and this is just about being consistent. So I support that. With regard to the PD units, I think they're essential, you know, especially as the fact that there's not a lot left to build out in the city. We need that, that designation for creativity and innovation. We look around, the 16 PDs that exist, I think only four of them are four acres or larger. Most of them are smaller parcels where you, you need creativity. And if you don't have that, we're going to end up with maybe something less than what we would like to have. So I support that. I think that what's become not appropriate anymore is the four-acre designation. It really doesn't apply. I would like to see that, that, the criteria we have to, for a PD is historical character, topography, land use, or landscaping. And I think that gives us something to look at. In this case, when you referenced the one project, we were talking about land use. But the four acres, you know, it just doesn't really exist in Capitola anymore, so I don't think it's, it's relevant. For tonight, I'm happy with just, you know, doing what I think is just business to get back to where the council does make the final decision. And if the path that we want to go is for the general plan committee to have input, I just think that one of the things that I support is the four-acre designation. It really doesn't apply. But I don't want to lose the PD process. I think that we will, we'll find that we'll cut out a lot of good projects by doing that.
Thank you. Sam?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, once again. And I'm going to support Michael's motion and approach to this, but I think I wanted to draw out as a part of this conversation that, I don't think it's about eliminating PDs, but the historical intent of the city leaders was to put a high threshold on when a PD could be approved. And when the, I think the intention here was that if the Planning Commission was going to deny a PD and not make those findings, it wouldn't necessarily just immediately and through the process of politics be overturned by three individuals. We're elected, we're in the council, but we're still potentially just three individuals, maybe contradicting or going against the, I think, intentions and thoughts of planning commissioners, other bodies, neighborhoods, the community. And I think that there's some reflection about putting into our process a higher threshold, if in fact, if we have a Planning Commission denial, that it just can't come, and through the process of majority vote in the council, that that can be overturned. Now, I'm not saying we do that now, but I'd hope that when this comes forth later, we give some consideration to balancing and how these significant exceptions that have tremendous impacts on residents and neighborhoods, the traffic, that we can keep that in mind too, and that we don't just lightly overturn a Planning Commission's decision that the PD is inappropriate. So I guess I would just like to add that, so maybe the process here about when one is approved is kept in mind. Thank you.
So your example, so I can clarify, would be if the Planning Commission denied a project, it would take like a supermajority of the council to overturn that?
That's what I was thinking, and keep it in mind, that if there was a denial, yeah, maybe there should be a greater review and thoughtfulness and levels of finding if the council members were going to overturn that. If a Planning Commission approves it, I have much more confidence that, and I think it still comes to the council in any event, that it can be approved. It must mean it's a good project, everyone's in agreement with it, or the majority of residents are in agreement with it. And so I think that's a different situation. But I would hope that through, as we look at this and develop it, that we give some consideration to those concerns as well.
Thank you.
Would you propose, Sam, that if it were approved by the Planning Commission, it would take a supermajority to deny by the council?
Well, I'd have to think about that. Maybe so. Maybe, but, you know, the one distinction on that, Michael, is the PD designation is in essence, because it's a significant variance from the zoning. Okay? So if it was going to be, you know, approved or denied by the Planning Commission, I think it should not maybe be so easily overturned at the council level. And, but if it was going to be approved, I don't know that it should be a higher threshold to, because it's the exception, it should be a higher threshold in the council to maybe overturn an approval of the PD. And simply because, again, it's, they're approving major exceptions to establish zoning regulations.
I appreciate that, and the supermajority idea was not lost on me. I think that my direction is more to make it not that significant a deviation from the surrounding zoning.
Well, that's why-
The PD becomes just-
Right.
-a small increment to aid in the development.
Right. And that's why, I mean, maybe not imposing that now, but for consideration of if there are very concrete and specific manners in which it can only be approved, then maybe the issue of supermajority is not an issue. But my finding is, I don't know how we completely get away from subjectivity, no matter how many, you know, subchapters we may try to write.
We do have a book that thick.
That's right. That's exactly right. And so, but I'm saying, I think, I didn't want to impose, suggest we impose that now. I think it's too complicated of an issue, too many other things that it touches, but I guess I didn't want to have staff lose sight of that as a part of the mechanism. But let's all look at that when those specific things come back. And if they are very defined and concrete things that can be quantified, where there's no question about it, well, maybe, maybe the, you know, the concerns of the community, the concerns of congestion and projects fitting in to the community are, are less magnitude at the time, so.
Dennis?
Well, if we're opening that box, it actually becomes a public process that, that a decision of the Planning Commission approval or non-approval will be appealable to the City Council. Is that correct? It is appealable, it becomes an appealable issue by the public as well as, as by the council.
Certainly.
I think we're, well, you're jumping into an issue of the relationship with the Planning Commission to the City Council, that you can't have different rules for everything you do. In other words, you have to apply uniformly what- In other words, you have to apply uniformly what the position of the planning commission should be and what the council's responsibility is. I don't think that, I don't think for a minute that the planning commission is more responsive to the public than we are. I think we are the most responsive, we're elected officials, we are the most responsive to the public, and we certainly get the most public input on issues. But if the process is expanded to as we have with other types of approvals, we have an open, we will have an open policy, so the public actually has the arm to appeal it. And that's a good thing, if we're gonna, they're involved in the process too, so.
For the record, Fairfield was not a PD, was it?
No.
I didn't think so. There were several citizens that came to me and said, you know, "That's a PD, and that's what we get." And I didn't think-
Across the street was.
But across the street was.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the Capitola Beach Villas.
Yeah. Thank you.
And the housing behind it was as well.
I have nothing else.
By the way, the property owner on 38th wants to call his project the Capitola Villas. And I said, "We already have a Capitola Villas. Will you consider changing your name?" And he said, "No." But I just thought, it might be confusing to people, and-
Villa Capitola.
Yeah, Villa Capitola.
Ah, all the difference in the world.
Call the motion.
Okay. Any other comments about this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. The next item, thank you. The next item is item 9B, informational report on gun regulations for the city of Capitola.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Rudy Escalante, your Chief of Police. And I've put together a report and a short PowerPoint for you with some information. In January, during your discussions, it was asked of council to bring back some information regarding the registration and local ordinances regarding the registration of firearms and what we could and could not do. This was a result of the incident that happened in Newtown, Connecticut, and some of the ones before them. So I kinda went over some of the state regulations. I looked at our municipal code with the assistance of the city attorney. I also looked at some of the preemption law that is out there of what we can and cannot do. So, you know, the gentleman who spoke during public comment is also going to be part of a group that the county chiefs is going to be meeting with next week. So we have started some dialogue there, but I will get into that in my presentation. So when we talk about gun regulations, we talk about the fact that state law actually expressly preempts the city from adopting local regulations regarding at least four areas. One of them is the registration or licensing of firearms. That is something that the state makes the mandate on the dealer themselves. Just to give you a little background on that, too, in order for somebody to be a gun dealer in the state of California, they have to get, one, a federal firearms license, and that goes through the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms. Number two, they have to go to the Department of Justice through the firearms division and get a license. And before that license can be approved, it's gotta come to me. And then they also have to get a business license. And they go through quite an extensive background check and history check before that can even happen. So there is an extensive process right now that they would have to go through. The manufacturer, sale, or possession of imitation firearms, those are those firearms that might have an orange tip on them, those that are not real firearms, and so we cannot regulate those. The restrictions on handgun possession in an individual's home, the options that I'm gonna bring forward to you today will not preempt this, obviously, because legally we cannot. Somebody's business or private property. And then the sale of handgun ammunition. And I'll get to a couple of bills that are actually going through the Senate and the State Assembly. I myself am a part of a group in the California Police Chiefs Association. We are on the Law and Legislative Committee for the state. We talk on a bi-weekly basis. We have our conference calls. And so we monitor these bills that come through, so I can definitely keep you updated on firsthand information on a couple of the bills that I'm gonna present about. Okay, just a couple of state summaries on some of the regulations. So there was an assault and is an assault weapons ban in California that has been in place since 1989. Across the country, we are recognized as having the strictest gun laws in the country. We think we do a pretty good job with them. There are some loopholes that we obviously are looking at, we're trying to address, but we feel like we do a pretty good job. In order to purchase a handgun, and I'll have some terminology that I'll try to explain, but not complicate it too much, there's handguns, and then there's long guns or rifles, which we're talking about shotguns. But when I talk about handguns, you have to be 21 years of age to purchase a handgun. In order to buy a gun, whether it's a long gun, or a handgun, or rifle, you have to be a California resident. And when you go to make that purchase, you have to show them your California driver's license, and then produce additional identification that shows that you are a resident of the state of California, whether it's a utility bill or something of that nature. You also have to go through what you call a handgun certification course, and in fact, the seller themselves has to be certified by the Department of Justice before they can do that course. In other words, if I'm going to be selling a handgun, and I work for a store, I have to complete the course put on by the Department of Justice. As the buyer, I also have to take a written test, and I also have to do a safe handling demonstration before I can actually purchase that weapon. There's a 10-day waiting period, as most people know. There are any convictions of felonies and some misdemeanors, and any mental health commitments, a person would be ineligible from purchasing a firearm. You must buy a firearm cable lock, and in fact, I brought one today. These are ones that we have at our police department. We give them away free. People can come down. In fact, most, if not all, the departments in the county have them. And these are free, but you do have to buy a lock, some sort of cable, trigger lock, before you can take that weapon out of the store. And we're fortunate enough, at least our local dealers, which are Big Five and Outdoor World, they do a really, really good job. I have inspected both of them. In regards to Outdoor World, if you need an extra lock, they will give it to you free of charge. And our local dealer, Big Five, they actually do not sell handguns. They only sell shotguns and long rifles. And the pending legislation, which I put down there as far as the ammunition bills, in 2010, there used to be a law where you had to give your fingerprint and produce photo ID to purchase ammunition. That was repealed. There is legislation going through the Assembly, which is Bill 48 by Assemblywoman Skinner, and Senator DeLeon for Senate Bill 53. Those two laws are primarily for ammunition, one of which, Senate Bill 53, would require people to get a permit to buy ammunition. Currently, a person can just go into the street, if they're the legal age, they can buy ammunition. So our current local regulations, 9.2 of the municipal code prohibits the discharge of firearms and any similar weapons within the city. There are state laws that prohibit the display or brandishing of a weapon. Those are misdemeanor felony-type violations, which our district attorney's office will prosecute, and they do a good job with that. 9.2 prohibits the wholesale of Saturday night special-type firearms. And again, I mentioned earlier, we provide a free locking device, and any person can actually come to the police department. Let's say they're going through an elderly person's home, they're cleaning out a home, and they find a firearm or a shotgun in the back closet that nobody knew about, they can actually bring that to us, and we will destroy that for them, and that does not cost them anything. So we do take those guns in. So in looking at the preemption law and what's going on around the state and what we can do locally, I came up with four options to present to you as possible gun regulations that we could add to the local ordinance. One of them is restricting the location of gun dealerships, basically requiring a use permit. We looked at the zoning ordinance, and it's not a conditional use. And so therefore, it wouldn't go to the planning commission and then the council. So if we added that to the conditional use, we would then be able to put additional conditions on a dealer if we wanted to do that. The restriction of gun shows, in order for a person to have a gun show in the state of California, they have to get a special type of FFL license. That's not something that I would issue. They would have to come to me with that special license. There's license types one through six. And so we have not had one here, at least not that I could find, and most of those gun shows occur in large facilities. In the state of California, they do have a licensed FFL dealer there who will handle the transfer of paperwork as far as the ownership. And you'd also want to know, too, at least in the state of California, if it's a public sale, you have to complete the paperwork of the transfer of ownership, and you wait the 10 days. Even on a private sale, you are supposed to go to an FFL licensed dealer to complete that sale, and then they would hold on to that for 10 days. So there are those restrictions that are currently in place. And our two public businesses would assist in that. We're fortunate enough that at Outdoor World, if you are employed there, and I've established a good relationship with the manager there, and he's been a wealth of information for me, he's very knowledgeable, not all the employees, just because you are employed there, can sell firearms. You have to go through their own course as well, because they want to pay attention to what they call straw sales. And a straw sale is when I'm a convicted felon, and I try and get a friend or a spouse to go in and buy a weapon for me, because I'm a prohibited person. They train their staff on how to recognize a straw sale, so that they can prevent those. And they actually have prevented straw sales before. And in Big Five, the only people who are allowed to make sales are the managers. And so I've been able to make contact with both managers there. They are very knowledgeable on the law. They knew most, more of it than I did. It's been a learning experience for me as well, because the laws are very complicated when it comes around assault weapons. So with that, I've developed these four options for you to explore. I will also keep you updated on the ammunition laws that are currently going through the Senate and the Assembly. In next week, or in two weeks, the California Police Chiefs Association has their conference, and there's going to be a large discussion about some of the ammunition and gun laws that are being presented.
Great. Michael?
Chief, what's your feeling about, it seemed like pretty much a no-brainer, we heard the first speaker talk about the database, being able to find prohibited persons who are now prohibited persons who formerly were registered gun owners. Any take on that?
Yes, we actually do get involved with that. We do work with our local agencies. The Department of Justice sends out a list. Basically, those people prior to the ban in 89 who registered their assault weapons, and then since then have now become a convicted felon or a misdemeanor, they're no longer able to possess them. We get that information, and we do follow up on it. I will also say this, if somebody tries to buy a firearm, and they are, during the 10-day waiting period, it's discovered that they're a convicted felon, we get a denial letter. We will actually do the additional investigation, submit that to the district attorney's office if we can prove that they knowingly knew they should not have applied to try and purchase a weapon, and we'll get an arrest warrant for them. So we have done that.
What is the maximum number of rounds allowed in a replaceable clip for any weapon in the state of California?
It's 10 rounds.
Right.
And a person can actually buy an AR-15, or at least the receiver. It's what they do with the other parts to it that is going to make it illegal, whether it's a flash suppressor, or an extended magazine, or a detachable magazine without a bullet block on it, or several other things that they can convert it to. So there is ways that people can build their own illegal weapons, similar to like an illegal car, streetcar, that shouldn't be on the road. Same thought process.
Right. But as I understand, if I talk to the folks at Outdoor World, you can't buy all the parts you need in that one place to assemble an illegal weapon. You have to go past that kind of gunsmith land-
That's correct.
-start doing things. Okay, I want to make sure of that, because that kind of scared me. And if someone wanted to have a gun show, would they need to come to us for a permit at this time? Or could they just get the firearm permit, the federal firearm permit, and just go forward and have their gun show without talking to us?
They would have to come to us to get it.
Okay.
Even with their federal firearms license. However, if we put that in the zoning ordinance, I mean, then you would have conditions that you can add to it.
And right now-
Unless you exempt it.
There's no, right now, technically, tomorrow, someone could go across the counter, if they had the right federal paperwork, and open a gun shop without any approval from us, because of our zoning regulations, or lack of zoning regulations. Is that correct?
I believe so. I'm gonna defer to the city manager's planning experiences much more than mine.
Yeah, the police chief and I, when we looked into this, we went and looked around the different zone districts, and where in our municipal code, we were talking about firearms or guns. And surprisingly, in the CC Zone District, a retail sales operator who's selling guns and other stuff, you know, similar to Big Five, I don't necessarily think would require a CUP, which is surprising, because so many things in the city do require use permits. So that would seem to be a relatively obvious area, you know, if you're gonna regulate so many other uses so intensely, this may be another one that deserves some attention as well.
And this is certainly by no means preempting of any federal or state laws. We can make it so that someone has to apply to us specifically if they want to sell firearms, period.
I believe that's correct, and I'd have to defer to the city attorney to be correct on that.
Right. And I think you also have the authority to limit the number of gun retailers in the city.
Well, that would be our, those would be our findings for denial, basically, by limiting.
Sure.
And the buyback would be anonymous? I mean, when we take guns in now, without a buyback, which is they surrender guns to the police department, we don't take ID or anything like that. People bring us guns, we just dispose of them.
That's correct.
No questions asked.
And there's two different options that I failed to highlight. I apologize about that, is the gun buyback or turn-in program, an amnesty-type program, and that's something that we've agendized for our next county chiefs' meeting, that we're going to be in discussion about. And in regards to the restrictions in school zones, that is currently state and federal law, as it is today. So that is something that we can add, but that is in existence today.
And it is something we spoke about at the Criminal Justice Council as well, and the county seemed very receptive in being the coordinator for a county-wide buyback program.
That's correct.
That we would participate in. Great. I have no more questions. Thank you.
Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for this report. I guess I wanted to ask you about the preemption. It was kind of unclear whether or not we can restrict assault rifles in Capitola, the sale of them, and the ammunition that is available for them.
Well, there's a current ban, and there's, without trying to get too complex into it, there's three different categories. Category one and two of assault weapons primarily deals with names and the types of weapons. So there is an appendix that is listed, and there are 50 or so weapons that are listed by name. And then also by feature. So if you looked at the name and by feature, those would be illegal. But if you had a rifle that didn't have a detachable magazine, and had less than 10 rounds, and didn't have a forward grip, and some of the other features, it would not be illegal in the state of California.
Under state law currently?
That's correct.
Okay. And I know the state legislature is considering bans on AR-15s and certain types of semi-automatic?
There are a lot of discussions of different types of weapons, that they would just ban all completely.
Right. Do we have any ability to, I mean, should we, are you recommending that we wait until to see what their action is, or maybe get out in front of that and consider that? Because that wouldn't seem to be preempted if they haven't acted.
Most of the chiefs in the state, at least on the Law and Legislative Committee that I've been talking to, are trying to handle, get a handle on their local ordinances first, and deciding what to support statewide as they work their way through.
Okay. So you recommend that we kind of wait for that, watch it?
I would think that, you know, there's gonna be something that comes out of the state legislature as to what type of laws that will be changed.
If we were to consider an ordinance limiting either gun shows or retail gun shops, would we be able to focus on and restrict certain types of weapons? Let's say somebody wanted to come in and have an antique gun show. I think most people would not be opposed to that, but would a blanket kind of prohibition cover that as well?
Well, there are certain laws that are on the books now that have antique guns specifically that are exempt from our current laws. There's those guns, and also the ones that are used by the Olympic team. So there are certain exemptions, and some of the antique ones, I believe it's prior to 1898. Don't quote me on that date, but it's the antique rifles.
Okay. So if we were to do anything of the sort like prohibiting gun- So if we were to do anything of the sort like prohibiting gun shows, these kind of exceptions would fall into that, or would make reference to it? So those would necessarily be prohibited?
That's correct.
Okay. Just one additional question, if I may, Mayor. When this first came up, I had also asked that we look into coordinating with the SoCal Union School District about, you know, interceding protective measures, what's the coordination if we should have a tragedy like what happened at Sandy Hook? And also working with the mall, I mean, really the places where we have large populations in congregation, and not necessarily immediately protected by, you know, armed guards. So I was wondering, have you been able to coordinate with the school district, particularly concerning New Brighton School? We have a coordinated plan, and what are maybe some of the steps that they're taking to be preventative and responsive in the event that we should have a horrible tragedy?
The police department has reached out and is working very closely with the school district. And we've met twice already, I have another meeting scheduled with them next week. I attended their school board meeting, also went to a county office of education meeting with all law enforcement and fire personnel to go over the code red, the lockdown, and the shelter in place programs that we have. We have a supervisor who actually goes to the school, and at the beginning of the year, we try and do that on an annual basis. The reason why we do it annually is because we have turnover at the schools, and so it's very important to reinstitute some of those procedures. So we have met with them, and we are going to continue to meet with them.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing, I think I'll open the public part of it.
Stephanie, can I make a statement first?
Okay.
Thank you. You know, I think that there's not a better time to talk about this. I mean, Santa Cruz County, this last week has been horrifying. And Rudy, you know more than about this than any of us, but just, I was just giving you the example of what's happened in this community in the last week involving guns, every one of them. Monday night, UCSE student was shot in the back of the head, runs away from a bus stop. Last weekend, a guy was shot dead at a local bar. We had a guy shoot himself in the leg up on Capitol Bluff, I don't know the details to it, I don't need to say them. Last week, we also had an 18-year-old Watsonville man was arrested for tossing away a pistol while being pursued by police. 18-year-old man was arrested after he was suspected of shooting from a car on Larkin Valley Road. Last night, the food bin was arm-robbed. I mean, this is prolific within our community. It isn't something, this actions that we take here has to come from the bottom up. And I agree with Rudy, I think, I think the state's looking for us to make suggestions of what we need to do on this thing, and I really appreciate the homework you did on this thing. But it appears to me that we need to go beyond housekeeping on this, and I think you see that. I think we have to take a step forward as a community, and I think our community expects us, for health and safety of our own community, to take laws and regulations, not abusing the Second Amendment, but to take rules. I'm going to give you some of them that I came up with, Rudy, and just, and maybe you and John can respond to them. And maybe, maybe they are stepping beyond what it is, but also, they could be suggestions at the state level that could be, could be taken. Number one is require anyone wishing to buy ammunition to first get a permit by passing a background check. That's what we do with weapons, and I'll tell you, there's cities out there that do this now beyond the state law. The city of Los Angeles and Sacramento require that you get a permit and you do a background check before you buy ammunition. We can do that as a community, we can take the step. We can require that all handgun owners to obtain a safety certificate for every year, rather than, when you buy, when you buy a handgun today, you go through, correct me if I'm wrong in this, Rudy, you go through the background check and the safety check, but you're not required, you have a five-year period before you're required to do that again. We can require that a person does this every year. You know, a person's mental state changes so often, that it certainly would be good to have, know that anybody who has a handgun that's out there in our community should have a check more often. We should require that all guns be property locked and stored when the owners are not present. I don't know that, if that is a law now, but certainly, when they're, in the presence of the gun, there's no requirement for that, but when they're not around the gun, there should be a law that states that they should have this gun locked up in a protected place. And certainly, police officers would expect that. The other thing is, is we should be very vocal about the ability of any time a resident has the opportunity right now to walk into the police department and turn in a gun. In other words, it doesn't have to be a gun turn-in, he can do it at any time, and that the police department will, if I'm correct, issue you a lock if you want a lock for your gun at any time, just come by the police department to do that. And we should actively promote people to do that. And then, as far as the gun turn-in thing, I like the actions you're taking, I think the county, countywide is the best thing to do it, but if we don't see willingness within a near future, I think we need to take something up on our, on our own. So...
There's definitely willingness, I can report that.
Okay. Would you respond to the ammunition thing, Rudy, what you think about that? Is that something that...
I have heard that, and reading the preemption law that I have, it says that we cannot do that, so, I mean, I'll have to get some more further discussion with the city attorney on that.
Okay. But I have read that Sacramento and Los Angeles have already done that, so...
I know they have, I've heard of that.
Okay.
But I'll have to research that some more.
But on the ammo issue, and specific background and licensing for someone to purchase ammo, that is something that I know the Cal Chiefs is talking about, and in fact, there's legislation on, has it been written and proposed at this point, or did you...
Yeah, that was the Assembly Bill 53 that I mentioned earlier, by, or Senate Bill 53 by Senator DeLeon, is that you have to get a permit to buy ammo. So that is in the works now.
Thank you, Rudy.
Yes, you're welcome.
Let me open it up to the public now, you've been sitting here very patiently. Would anyone like to speak on this? You have to come, you have to come up to the microphone, because there's thousands at home that are listening and watching.
Thousands? Wow, I like that.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. I have just a question, and my greatest concern in listening to all of this is that I believe we need to do as much, to have as many restrictions as possible, but I'm also concerned about mental health, and what we can do to raise the capacity of our health department to offer mental health services. We need to be able to treat people who may in fact become violent, and I can't imagine that the City Council of Capitola can do anything with that, but I'd like to hear what you think about it.
Thank you very much. Would you like to speak, sir?
I had to observe the three-minute time limit, but the final comment...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
The final comment and question that I wanted to make was, I was hoping to suggest that the city council, if they feel strongly about any of the legislation that you may read in the documentation I presented to you, or that Chief Escalante suggested, was of interest to you, that, my hope was that you could resolve as a city council to send your direct comments to the bill's authors, to see that, you know, see if there's anything that you could do, or just simply make your voice heard, that the people you represent are in favor of such common sense legislation. So that's, that's really where I was heading, I was, my question was, is have you done such a thing before at the state level? Have you resolved to approve of anything, or support anything being done at a state level?
Other than, other than guns, yes, but it was going to be one of my suggestions, that part of the motion tonight was to communicate, because of the preemption laws, communicate our desire for, you know, very strong legislation on a state level.
See, if we were preempted from doing anything at our level, at least we could ask that it be done at the state level.
We can certainly write letters of support.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council, and would someone like to make a motion, or further discussion about this?
I'll leave the motion to Dennis, because I know he's chomping at the bit for this one, but I will, you know, it's interesting about public health, or mental health background checks, prior to getting a gun permit, it was brought to my attention just today, that if someone knows that that's one of the background check items, they are less likely to seek help. And that was kind of a scary concept to me, that someone could have a mental health issue, and be having thoughts of firearms rattling around in their head, and have the presence of mind to say, "Yeah, but if I go get help for this, they won't give me the gun, and I'd rather have the gun, I don't even want to go there." But that's a thought that was brought up to me. I'll let Ed talk about the fact that there were always guns, but not always mass shootings. That was a great point. Locked and stored law, as far as locked and stored of a personal weapon, always when you're not present, it's common gun practice. I just don't know how we'd enforce it without rummaging through people's homes. I wish I were more of an expert, but the word assault weapon gets bandied about, and you can look at 12 different pictures, and it's beyond me which one is really considered an assault weapon. You know, it boils down to how many shots you can fire all at one time before reloading, and hence, the 10-round clip regulations. The Bushmaster that was used in Connecticut, much higher round count. But a six-shooter is a semi-automatic weapon. It will shoot as fast as you pull the trigger. So whether it looks like, you know, a Colt Peacekeeper from 1860, or it looks like an AK-47, if it's, if you can fire as fast as you pull the trigger, they're all semi-automatic. So that's not a, you know, a bar either. So there's, you know, like I said, I don't own a gun, I'm not a member of the NRA, I'm just not smart enough, or intelligent, or learned enough about this to really make decisions on that level. But I think that the zoning is a no-brainer, and we should do it, they should have to come to us if they want to sell guns, period. I think I'm reluctant to ban gun shows, but I want some serious permit, and the reason is, we've never had one, we may never have one, but I do want them right in front of us, talking to us for a long time before we let one happen. I think the no-gun zone's a no-brainer, we gotta just do it. Heavy publicity on turning in weapons to Capitola from wherever you are. I don't care if you're in Watsonville, you want it, and you feel it's safer to come here and turn in, you know, your big brother's gun, by all means. Now, no questions asked, anonymous, it's done. And we need to publicize that. And like Dennis said, we need to publicize the fact that we have free gun locks, and no one walks out of a store without a gun lock. And obviously, participate in county-wide buyback when it happens, and I'm sure it will, judging from the CJC meeting. And we need to write to Sacramento as a council, because it is more powerful than individual letters from citizens, as elected officials, saying we need more help in the control of firearms. And those are my thoughts, thank you.
I just have a few thoughts, I'll let, I'll let Dennis make the motion also, but just to weigh in, you know, I think there's nobody in the room that was, who watched President Obama's speech, that wasn't impacted by the emotion at the end, because we've all felt the pain from the Sandy Hook incident, and like Dennis brought up, the other incidents that just occurred last night and two days ago. So it is, we are all emotional about this, the problem we deal with is, we have to uphold the Constitution. And in doing so, you know, we can't violate laws, but we can certainly, I think with the message that I took away from that speech was, we need to do something. I think that's what we're all trying to do here. I looked at the suggestions by the police chief, chief, thank you for those suggestions. I think, obviously, you know, I, about the conditional use permit, I think that's something we definitely should take action on. The fact that we would not have control about where something can open up, I think that's a loophole that we have in our, in our system, we should deal with that. The gun-free school zone, that's an existing law that you said, so we're just following through with that. The gun turn-in program, you're exploring that, I think that's great, you've got some things that you said, we can take guns right now, we've already done that. As far as gun shows, you know, we just spent last meeting talking about we're the aloha city, I'd rather be known for aloha than gun shows. I would have no problem restricting gun shows in this town. We provide a lot more than that, and that's not against people that are gun fans, there's lots of places that do that, I just don't think it needs to be here. So with that, you know, I think the important thing is, we need to do some action, you've suggested some, this is a start. You know, there's further litigation that the state is working with, and as that comes down, I'm sure, if it's not implemented statewide, once we have the option to do that, I think we're all ready to take some kind of action. So those are my thoughts.
Sam?
I just want to say, I agree with, you know, everything that's been said that's preceded me. I mean, I really would like us to focus on what is the brunt of the issues that we've seen in the country, which is the proliferation. And I don't know, it may be hard to actually identify it, but I think we know what we want, to stop the proliferation of, and having them, and I'm going to call it assault weapons, for the lack of a better name, Michael, but, you know, having them get in the hands of the wrong individuals. And I think that we can do that without violating individuals' Second Amendment constitutional rights. And, because I don't, I don't believe that the Second Amendment guarantees us the right to any weapon that we may choose or want to have. And so it is about finding the regulations that protects the public welfare and the health and safety, and our duty is to the citizens of Capitola. And I wish, I mean, if we could go to whatever measures we can to prevent the proliferation of these kinds of weapons that are doing the greatest harm, and are the greatest threat to public safety, and hope that we can get behind in doing that. And without a way, I don't, my intention is not to condemn all gun owners, all guns, you know, the best defense that we have against those who would do harm are our officers who carry guns. And so, you know, that is a measure of public safety as well, and hopefully, we can balance that also. But I would hope that we could take the strictest terms of preventing and the proliferation of the most harmful types of weapons and ammunition that goes with them, and then doing what we can within the mental health system, for assuring that people get the assistance that they need, and, but do not have the ability to acquire weapons that would cause them to do harms to themselves, to their families, or members of the public. So there's a lot of things that have been thrown out here, I hope we consider a start, and we continue to look at this, and certainly strongly support the state legislature in passing these background checks and prohibitions on certain types of weapons. So Dennis, I'm going to turn it over to you, you led us in this, so...
Let me just make one comment first, I think that we should not have gun shows in town. I think this place would be packed if we, if we scheduled one. If somebody scheduled one at Jade Street Park, I think the people would come down here and be, be very unhappy, because it would look like we're condoning it. And I don't want to, I don't want to condone anything about guns. So, I mean, my father had guns, he taught me how to shoot, but that was a long time ago. But, you know, sports, one thing, hunting's another thing, but, you know, this is crazy, to have all these guns in circulation around, it's very scary. So I don't, I don't think we should have gun shows.
Well said by all of you. I think that the best direction that we can give staff at this time is to actually send it back to you with a, with a list, and I'm willing to, anyone to add something into it after I give this list of items to look at, and prepare an ordinance for us. And maybe, maybe we really need within our municipal code, a gun ordinance itself, or a weapons ordinance, it maybe stands alone by itself, and you guys to make that decision on how to, how it's formulated. But first of all, in Rudy's list, number one, adopt a resolution prohibiting, prohibiting gun shows within the city limits. I kind of hear from the council that they would like to see an ordinance that prohibits. Can you, can you continue to explore the possibilities of volunteer gun turn-in or buyback program? There's two things here, one is, one is to let the public know that there's always an opportunity to turn guns in at any time, from anywhere, to the city of Capitola. The other thing is, is what you're working on now, Rudy, but if it is not going to, it doesn't, if it feels like it's not going to fruition with an area-wide turn-in, that we look at doing it ourselves. And I certainly would work with you and help you with that, I'm sure someone else... Adopt a resolution, designate a gun-free zone within 1,000 feet of school, assistant with current state and federal laws, that's housekeeping, I think that needs to be in there. Explore potential land use changes that would prohibit or limit guns and ammunition sales in certain areas of the city. I think we need to look at our zoning ordinance, so where we're allowed. And I personally would, would be in favor of actually going into a moratorium right now, allowing any new gun, gun sales in this, in the city, or adding new until... any new gun sales in the city, or adding new until we have this ordinance written. I'd like to see some, because we could see people coming in now to actually, to open gun stores and places now, before this ordinance goes into place.
We could hold any applications from this date till we settle this. I don't think, do we have that ability at this point? We did not necessarily agendize a moratorium, I'm not sure we can have a standing to actually do that, but I think that since we're in discussion on the change in the ordinance, to make it a use that's an exception.
You can tell us to come back with a moratorium ordinance, if you wish.
Well, when we come back with the zoning ordinance, we won't need the moratorium. I think Dennis is trying to prevent tomorrow, somebody coming in and starting to sell guns.
I'm concerned between one month from now, when we have this thing written up, that in between that time, all of a sudden, we see two new gun stores open in town.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we would not be able, would we be able to stop that?
Not unless we adopted a moratorium ordinance to study the issue. I mean, right now, they don't have to come to the city at all, but we don't have that on our agenda tonight, so.
Well, this.
I mean, we can come back.
What we have on the agenda now isn't enough to allow us to do that, John?
I don't think so.
Couldn't we get this zoning ordinance back to us just as fast as we could get a moratorium back? Let's move on the zoning right away. This way, as opposed to just its direction, let's vote to have the staff do the zoning ordinance, so we can have a reading.
Yeah, what I would suggest you do is when we come back with the zoning ordinance piece of it, we adopt it as an emergency ordinance, so it can go into effect immediately, and then we would adopt it as a regular ordinance and have a second reading in case the emergency ordinance ultimately got overturned in court.
And if it wasn't possible to actually write the zoning ordinance end of it, I would still like to see a moratorium come to us the next council meeting that gives us room to do that.
Well, I don't think you'd need a moratorium ordinance if you adopt emergency ordinance, because it goes into effect immediately.
Can it be in our very next agenda?
I think I understand what the council's asking for, and for the next agenda, my suggestion would be that we just adopt an urgency ordinance saying, no gun sale, no additional gun sales will be issued, and then we come back and take the additional time to write an ordinance about a conditional use with the findings. If possible, I'd like to do it all with one fell swoop, frankly, but the urgency ordinance, I think, would be a little bit simpler. So I can, we can commit to getting that back to you in two weeks. We'll do our best to bring the entire ordinance package, and maybe a little.
Make it so we can approve something like that at the next meeting. We don't have to go through two readings to do it.
Yeah, the urgency ordinance would be one reading and you'd be done. The full ordinance would take more.
Yeah, part of that ordinance, if you're gonna be requiring a conditional use permit, that's a change to your zoning ordinance, it has to go to the planning commission before it can come to you. So that would be another reason for doing an urgency ordinance.
So we can do an urgency ordinance, and the urgency ordinance would be that they would need an approval from us, and it wasn't just a conditioned use, correct? I only ask that because I question the legal grounds to have an ordinance that says there will never be ever again another gun shop. I wonder whether that could be construed as preempting state law. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't think you can prohibit gun sales in the city. I think you can limit the number of outlets in the city where gun sales take place, and we have two. So we could come back with an emergency ordinance that limits the number of gun retailers in the city of Capitola to two, and that's not a zoning ordinance. And then we can, in the meantime, get the zoning ordinance to the planning commission, which is basically going to the CC district regulations and adding gun retailers to the laundry list of use permit requirements.
I totally understand. Got it. Thank you. That's great.
Okay. In housekeeping, Rudy, I think we needed to add something in about the fire and discharge of firearms within the city limits. Is that in our ordinance now, or not?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay. Okay, and we discussed the zoning issues. I would like to take a CS take with existing gun owners a step farther in requiring that anyone wishing to buy ammunition needs to go, needs to first get a permit by passing a background check. And I do know from reading that this is done in other cities now, and I'd like to at least come to us with an advice how to do that, if, and how that works.
I will research that.
Require that all guns be property locked and stored when the owners are not present. I understand that it's pretty unenforceable, but at the same time, it should be something that's known by the public, that they're responsible to do that. Because if a kid picks up a gun, and, well, the dad isn't there shooting it, that dad is responsible, one way or the other. And that's, that's the intent of this.
There is current penal code law that if you store a gun recklessly in that manner, you can be arrested for that.
Okay. Okay, I think that's enough homework for, to get us started on this thing, and I think it's urgent within this community, that they're expecting us to take action, and I'm hoping that we can, within a month, have this thing.
And I take it we need a second and a vote on the urgency ordinance to come back? Do we need to take actual action on that?
Just give me direction. If you want to give, pass, adopt a motion, give me direction to prepare that ordinance.
You want to do that separately?
I think that that's important to do, so it's on the record.
You make that motion, I just second that motion.
Okay, I make a motion that an emergency ordinance be prepared, the very next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council, to limit the number of gun retailers in Capitola, and require zoning change to go back to the planning commission regarding conditioned uses.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And now my motion stands for my list.
Is there a second to Dennis's motion?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good, thank you very, very much.
Okay, is everybody ready? We can reconvene. We're gonna go on to item 9C. The consideration of an ordinance amending section 8.38 of the Capitola Municipal Code pertaining to smoking regulations. And there's an ordinance, this would be a first reading. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Rudy Escalante here, Chief of Police. So in October and November of 2012, we met and we presented some options in regards to our smoking ordinance. The first time we met, the council directed staff to do some research regarding amending our smoking ordinance. It was originally developed back in 2009, and since that time, there have been several municipalities that have done things to strengthen their ordinance. So I looked around and was able to find some good language and some things that actually are retailers are actually doing now, but we just don't have it in our ordinance. So I added some of those items, and we talked about them in the November meeting, and since the holiday, we are now able to bring those back. Several cities and counties have made significant changes to their current ordinances. That included requiring additional signage, which is consistent with state law, and developing distance requirements for tobacco retailers, and also for the sale of tobacco products around schools. And lastly, prohibiting tobacco products at public events and outside dining areas. We've been in collaboration with our Santa Cruz County Tobacco Education Program. We've received letters from them, and it's interesting that some of the suggestions that they have made are things that we have added in our ordinance as well, to try and strengthen our ordinance a little bit. And so I put the language up here for you. There are five sections, I believe, and I was gonna go over each one, and if there was language changes that we could go over if you wanted to. The first one is a definition of schools, which means any public or private preschool, or elementary, middle school, or high school within the city of Capitola. These two definitions are not in our current ordinance, which I think I gave you as an attachment. Reasonable distance requirement, that means a distance that ensures that occupants of an area in which smoking is prohibited are not exposed to secondhand smoke, so they create a distance of 20 feet. And as far as restaurant, I put the outdoor dining areas in restaurant, at least in that definition. Even though it's inside places, we do have locations where there are outside dining areas. And so that was the first part of the ordinance, the first section. Section 2 would hereby read the prohibiting of smoking in indoor places, and that's again the restaurant and the outdoor dining areas. No questions? And section 3 talks about the prohibition of smoking in outdoor public places, such as public events that are open to the general public, regardless of any fear or age requirement. This would include like a farmer's market, the events that we have down in the village, that those special events would be designated as non-smoking. And then the reasonable distance requirement, that's where this would fall into that section, which would be amending section 835.055. The next section is 838.110 would be added to read as follows, the posting of signs. This language was taken from other ordinances, and all of the, at least the ones that I inspected actually have the signage, and I have a picture of it here, so you can see what the signage actually looks like. There's the California Penal Code 308 kinda governs that, along with the Business and Professions Code. And in the language, it talks about the warning signs. And while the signs that I'm gonna show you don't have that language, there has been updates. And so you can see on the next slide here, where it talks about the warning, and then down further, it talks about updated to conform to any subsequent state or federal requirements as amendment under section 308, and that's what we have there. So there's a picture of the signs, and that was taken off of one of the businesses on 41st Avenue. We have about 15 retailers in our city. As noted in my staff report, we had about an 18% rating where people would sell tobacco products when decoys would go in. So if you have 15 or 16 retailers, it's about 2 to 3. So right now, they use the updated signage, which is the "we" card. And on the right is the under 18 sign, and where to report unlawful tobacco sales. Most of the time, you'll see those on the counter as well. Some stores have them in both places, right there at the entrance, and then they also put more on the counter. And then the last addition to the ordinance would be to add section 838.112, which is regulating the sale of tobacco products. And this would be where they would have to request to ask for identification, establishing the person's age as 18, unless the seller has some other clear convincing basis for knowing the buyer's age, such as they looked at me with the gray hair, they would know that it would be over 18 years of age. So that clear and convincing evidence is the example I can give you. It would also add the section of that no sale of tobacco products would be within 1,000 feet of a school. We currently don't have anyone in that restriction now, which is why we added the last two subsections in the event that we were in that position. So those are the additions that we would make to our smoking ordinance, and if you have any questions, or if you want any changes in the language, what I put up there is the underlying section that would be added, or amended. Yes?
Chief, because we have no existing tobacco retailers within the radius of schools, we can strike the two exceptions, can we not?
Okay.
Is that acceptable, John?
Yeah, but you don't...
There is no one existing selling tobacco within that radius, so why have the exception there?
Because if somebody wants to come in and do it...
Well, no, if somebody wants to come in and do it, it's prohibited.
Okay.
The exception is for somebody who's existing. It's to grandfather in existing retailers, which don't exist.
But think about if it's the other way around. Let's say we had a new school that opens in a location...
Oh, oh...
Jay Street.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, point taken. Secondly, there was a penal code on half-inch lettering for the $200 fine, and I don't see that, any of that lettering on the signs you showed me. Is that a separate sign in the retailers?
That would be a separate one.
Okay, good. I have no questions.
Questions?
Yes. Chief, I had one question. If we pass this ordinance, the American Lung Association would then upgrade our grade to what?
I don't know.
Oh, you didn't get it?
No, I've met with them, and they aren't telling. There's no guarantee. No, seriously. And I'll tell you, we're a D right now, and it could stay a D regardless, because they are so hot and heavy on the tobacco licensing, retail license thing, that we've decided not to go for, that I've kinda given up on the American Lung Association, and saved my breath talking to them. Throw that in there. And I think we're doing the right thing, and I think that's what matters.
Dennis.
Rudy, give us an example of outside seating. Is that like the deck of Zelda's or any of those?
That would be an example, yes.
They would be banned and all those.
That's correct. And there's no smoking in dining areas anyway, so...
Here, here. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this topic?
Mr. Curious Lefkett.
Good evening.
I'm Richard Amy, live in McCormick Court. Does this say within 20 feet of the school? What I'm thinking about is, does that mean somebody walking on the sidewalk, a New Brighton Middle School's subject to arrest? Or more importantly, my neighbor, who sadly smokes, in her backyard, right next to the gym? So I heard it...
But not within 20 feet of the entrance? Isn't it the 20 feet of the entrance of the building?
I didn't see it say the entrance. I saw it said the public facility.
You're correct, councilmember Termini.
It's 20 feet of the entrance. I think one of the things we're trying, and I think we can be specific about this, we have some tobacco retailers that allow, that have smokers in the front of their store that are well within 20 feet of adjacent stores, that we need to curtail. I think it's kind of an obvious nuisance, and it needs to, you know, I'm not saying anything against the tobacco retailer. God love you, carry on, do what you need to do, but I think having an ashtray and a chair out in front of your store, and it's within 10 feet of the adjacent store, shouldn't be happening.
I was gonna suggest language that we extend the ban up Monterey Avenue north of Longway. Right now, it's just south of Longway, and if we extend it north of Longway, up Monterey Avenue, could I take care of that?
On the public street?
Yep.
I'm having a hard time with that. I kinda like our ordinance, but I'm not gonna, I'm not willing to support a creeping citywide ban on all public smoking. I'm not quite ready to hoist the, my former brother smokers on that.
Well, last night, we discussed this. Remember, there was a motion at one time to put both the whole city in it's no smoking.
Oh, yeah, I know.
And then it was the whole village.
I know.
And finally, we came down to the area that we have, so...
But I think that's reasonable, just to extend it up that street. There's still the other streets in the village where people can smoke.
To maybe Cap Avenue, maybe make the ban be the village, which is Capitola Avenue, Esplanade, Stockton, between the bridge, and can make Cap the new boundary, as opposed to Longway.
Yeah, just move it all the way, Capitola Avenue towards the ocean.
We still, we still need it up one block, to take care of that.
Where?
Up one block.
Well, I don't wanna...
We need it up to the Thai restaurant.
Basically, we're targeting the cigar store, and all I wanna do is stop the cigar store from having people stand out in front of the cigar store and smoke. So this will do that, because their entrance is within 20 feet of the restaurant on one side, and the other shop on the other. So I think that's, that's good. I'm applauding this, because it will stop the smoking in front of the cigar store.
How's everyone feeling about what Stephanie was suggesting? We take everything to Capitola Avenue and include that finger.
Like I said, I'm reluctant to creep it across the capital city, but that's just...
And I would be concerned that we haven't really noticed prohibition like that tonight.
Yes, that's right.
And that, I mean, I'm certainly, if you wanna direct staff to maybe propose and look at that, and bring that back as a separate proposal.
Good point.
I'm open to that.
Good point.
But I guess, may I, Mayor, I wanted to, on this, Michael, you mentioned that this ordinance would prohibit the cigar store from having people smoke within 20 feet of their adjacent neighbors.
But they can smoke inside the cigar store.
Right.
Right.
But I'm, where, which, which part of the ordinance would apply to that situation?
It would apply citywide as far as reasonable distance. So if somebody is in an area where it's not prohibited, then you have a 20-foot distance requirement.
Is this, this is 2R?
I'm sorry, what?
2R? Is that the reference to reasonable distance? It means a distance that ensures that occupants of an area in which smoking is prohibited are not exposed to secondhand smoke created by smokers outside the area.
My apologies, should be is not prohibited. Thank you for bringing that.
Should say smoking, which is not prohibited.
So if it's not prohibited, and you are now in an area, then it would be the example that councilmember Termini just gave me.
No, you have the right language here, which means that...
That's right.
If you're on a sidewalk, or in an area where it's not prohibited, but you're within 20 feet of a doorway to a location where it is prohibited, you shall not smoke within 20 feet of that doorway. And I think that's part of the state law as well.
That's correct.
Any public building that you see has posted in front of it, no smoking within 20 feet of the entrance of the building. That's just a standard.
Thank you for clarification.
Thai Basil has an outside deck, so they're not allowed to smoke on that deck, so...
Not only that, but, I mean, there are smokers in front of the cigar store that are smoking within 20 feet of their outside seating area.
Oh.
Which is more onerous. So like I said, I think this cleans up a nuisance that we have that exists, that we can, you know...
As long as we have the tools to remind people to not smoke there.
Yeah.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone else from the public like to ask a question, or make a comment? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second?
Any other discussion? Good work, chief. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is item D, discussion and consideration of a St. Patrick's Day special event.
This is the Rudy Escalante Show tonight. This is not...
So we've brought this staff report for consideration of the special event permit for a parade down in the Esplanade for St. Patrick's Day. Staff has a couple of concerns. We received the application on the 28th of January, which gives us very little time to adequately prepare safely for the event. There are some questions that we have regarding the event, regarding the parade. We don't know if there's gonna be floats, a band, or music. So we also have some concerns about safety due to the potential negative community impacts from road closures and parking and such. So the permit was received, we have processed it, and our ordinance requires us to bring that to council for consideration, for the event to be held on March 17th, which would include an encroachment permit, an entertainment permit, and a banner permit.
Any questions?
This is something that I brought to the chief through the Art and Cultural Commission. It was gonna be an Art and Cultural Commission event, where we took a donation from the merchants, and we in turn did it like a Wednesday night concert, where we had the ability to use the stage, because it was a city event, thus saving them some of the cost of the special event permit. But after meeting with the chief, and after considering this whole process, and by the way, the parade consisted of a five-minute walk for half a dozen pipers to go from Stockton to the Esplanade stage. It wasn't, you know, a grand parade. It was the new shortest parade in the county. Trying to get one up on Aptos. And after speaking with the chief, you know, our Wednesday night concerts, we hold the concert, the people all come down, we listen to the music, the band stops, everybody goes home. St. Patrick's Day is not the same kind of an event. It's been brought to my attention that after you have the band and the music, then all those people continue on into the night and become our problem. And I question whether that $3,000, including the refundable deposit, would cover the police overtime, which we might have to consider for something that is marketed and attracts 500 happy Irishmen. Does it? I don't think we have overtime calculated in there, and...
We have taken a look, and I've asked the police chief to take out his pencil and estimate this. I think that, you know, it's probably on the low side. Certainly, there's the potential, depending on the scale of the event, to drive further overtime costs. You know, we were basing it off of 200 to 500, probably the smaller size. If it got bigger, we could see more costs.
And I was a big proponent of this at the Art and Cultural Commission, because, you know the way I am, and it's another time to...
You're not Irish.
No, I'm not, but, you know, we're just talking about another excuse for a party, basically. And I thought a band, and it's the off-season, and it, you know, brings people into the village. But on the other hand, I have to consider the overall health and safety and well-being of the community, so I'm kinda stepping back a little bit and giving the rest of the council free rein on this one.
Sam.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is the city of Capitola?
It says Art and Cultural Commission.
It started that way, but again...
Well, it says city of Capitola.
Yeah.
Capitola Art and Cultural Commission. So I just wondered, and we have esteemed representatives of the city of Capitola saying that they don't believe it's properly prepared or ready, but it's being brought to council anyway. Can we, just maybe instead of having the council kinda, you know, get in the middle of this, send it back to the city of Capitola and say, you guys work it out, and then bring us the permit?
You know, I have a solution. And you know what precipitated this? Just so happens, as it would happen, St. Patrick's Day falls on a Sunday. By what could be better than that? Okay? So it was an opportunity for a party on a weekend, parade, music. I think that if we set a cost of this above and beyond the cost of the band, which we were gonna get a donation for, and say, well, we're not gonna need a $1,500 donation for this. If you wanna donate $6,000 to the Art and Cultural Commission to cover not only the cost of the band, but also the additional police and public works, it might just go away.
Staffing costs would definitely be increased, depending on the size, because we would have to hold people over from our shifts. It's a really hard estimate based on the number, and again, in the short timeframe that we do have to prepare for it, it's hard to gauge that, but we would be in a situation to be pressed to bring people in, either call them back, or hold shifts over, and if there was, if it, and hopefully would never get out of control, then we'd look at other outside resources.
I mean, it's a big day for partying. I don't think we need to encourage more necessarily. I like the idea of the music, but, I mean, people are out partying on St. Patrick's Day anyway. Anyway, they're gonna be down there, and...
And we do allow impromptu use of the bandstand without reservation, à la the ukuleles. So I'm sure that the local bagpipe club could jump up there for a couple of hours, but I think maybe the council may wanna get in the middle of this and take a stand.
Is there a member of the public that wanna speak on this thing?
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak from the public? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back.
Yeah, I kinda, I kinda feel the same way. Figure a way to downsize this thing, so it doesn't become Arts and Cultural Commission necessarily event like. Can you, can you arrange that?
Absolutely.
They could walk, they could even walk down the Esplanade with bagpipes on their own. Nothing stops them from walking down the street playing their bagpipes.
It doesn't violate the smoking ordinance. But secondhand bad pack music has been known to kill, so I'm just gonna let you know.
Ed, any thoughts?
I just have some questions. I, you know, it seems like we're going a different direction, but when I read the application, like Sam mentioned, I thought it was from the Art and Cultural Commission, but then I remember, you know, when we did the marathon application, there was a lot of organization, and there was a lot of preparation, and, you know, we always try to make sure whenever we get behind something, it's well-prepared. And I read this, it looked like it was advertised time was from 2:00 to 4:00, start time was 12:45 to 5:00, teardown was 5:00 to 6:00, but the closing of the streets was 12:45 to 2:00. I couldn't figure out when the event was gonna happen, and I...
Yeah, the closing of the street was literally the length of time it takes to do the Halloween parade. It was, you know, five minutes down the Esplanade. But again, I totally appreciate this, and perhaps the thing to do is to deny this as a council, and to let it be just like the merchants and the beer companies promote it as they will inside.
To get you off the hook, I'd like to make a motion that we deny this proposal.
Second. Any other discussion?
Do we have to act to deny it? I mean, if we don't act to approve it, doesn't it just fail?
We have to bring these special event permits to the council.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, no.
Okay, 3 to 2. Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, Mayor Harland, can I, can we go back to the gun discussion? We just did a brief review of the Capitola Municipal Code, and I realize that Santa Cruz has an ordinance on its books that has no analog in Capitola's municipal code, and it's very basic ordinance. It just says that no guns are allowed on city property. So you can't bring guns to City Hall, to the civic auditorium, to the parks, beaches, and things of that nature. Is that something this council would be interested in? Just to...
Yes, I think so. Any housekeeping things that you find like that, since it's coming back to us, we would entertain putting it down.
Do we need to amend our motion to include that?
No.
It's part of the direction, is it not?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next item is 835 Bay Avenue, an application 12-161, a one-year review of a temporary conditional use permit to permanently permit a model manufactured home in conjunction with an existing manufactured home sales business, Ideal Homes, in addition to a signed permit for a new monument sign in the CC or Community Commercial Zoning District. Ryan?
Madam Mayor, before Ryan starts, I'm gonna have to recuse myself. I do not have a relationship with the applicant, but the subject, Ideal Homes, does have a financial consideration with my company, Triad Electric, in the last 24 months, so to eliminate the appearance of any impropriety, I will recuse myself. And since this is the last item on the agenda, I will say Happy Valentine's Day, and bid you all goodnight.
Thank you. Unless you have any other last-minute council communications.
I think the Happy Valentine's Day covered it.
Good, thank you very much.
I will note that I will be asking for council volunteers to sit on the city's web update task force, and if your presence, if you're not here, you may be volunteered.
I volunteer in absentia.
Okay.
Thank you for volunteering for that. Okay, Ryan, good evening.
Good evening, council. So this looks a little bit familiar, it's because about a year ago, this is before the council, just to give a little background, on February 2nd of last year, it went to our planning commission, where they made a recommendation to the council to deny the request for basically displaying this manufactured model home. It went before the council on February 23rd, and it was approved with a couple of conditions. One is that it was a one-year approval, where the applicant could come back for an extension, hence why we're here tonight. The structure to be set back 150 feet from Bay Avenue, which it is, and they, and to submit a landscape plan, which they did, and they put in some landscaping. So that's just a little bit of background. So you're probably familiar with the site. This is generally known as the Grimes property. Here's just the general locations of where the model home is, where the Ideal Home office is, and then also part of tonight's application is a proposed monument sign, and that's the approximate location of where they wanna put a monument sign. So here's basically what it looks like today. That's the model home there, and the site plan. And just to familiarize yourself with Ideal Homes, basically, they sell manufactured homes, mobile homes, real estate. As I pointed out, their office is located in that multi-tenant building at 831 Bay, and what they're requesting tonight is to permanently keep that 1,500-square-foot model home where it is today, as well as a new monument sign. Just general information, right now, basically, people can park at their office parking lot, and then they can access the model as part of a pathway that goes to the model... and then they can access the model as part of a pathway that goes to the model right now. And, basically, their hours are from 9:00 to 6:00, which is when the model is available to be looked at. As I mentioned, in addition to the continued use of the manufactured home, the applicant is requesting a sign permit for a new monument sign. The proposed sign will be located just to the south of the existing driveway to the Grimes' property, approximately three feet back of this existing sidewalk. It's a two-sided wood sign, painted on both sides. There's no lighting proposed for the sign, and it meets all of our monument sign code requirements. So, as you know, this is a prime commercial property that's likely to be developed, probably, in the coming years. The proposed model manufactured home is certainly not the highest and best use for the property. And so, staff is not recommending that it be a permanent conditional use permit. If the council can support the use to continue, it would be recommended that a conditional use permit be reviewed on a yearly basis, similar to what we did previously. And staff cannot support the new monument sign, as the model home is only a temporary use in conjunction with the Ideal Homes office, and they currently have an exterior sign that advertises their business. So, we didn't feel it was necessary for them to have another monument sign. So, I'm available for any questions?
Dennis?
Are all the signs and banners in conformity to our ordinance right now?
They did pull a banner permit, so the banner they have up there does have a banner permit. And it can be up for 30 days out of the calendar year.
30 days in the calendar year?
Yes.
We did take some enforcement actions earlier on. There had some issues with A-frames and some banner signs, which staff had to go and talk to them about removing.
Okay. Was it an enforcement problem?
They brought them in, they popped up a couple of times, but then they came in, they got a banner permit last year. You're allowed to have a banner permit 30 days out of each calendar year. So, they did come in and get a banner permit last year, then they got another banner permit for 2013 this year, so...
Any other questions, or Ryan? Then, would the applicant like to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Richard Amigan from Carwood Court, on across the street. During the year, we applied for a monument sign, and it was denied because it's a temporary use. That precipitated saying, "Let's apply for a permanent use permit, so we can put a monument sign up." The arrangement is that they are on a month-to-month lease. Even if it's allowed to be there, I don't think it'll be there forever either, because I hope there is improvement on that Grimes' property at some point. While I can accept that it isn't the highest and best use as a display of a modular unit, certainly, nothing on that site, as was talked about last time, which is a construction site used for dumping freeway construction debris on, and no trees at all, or no landscaping, is less than the best ideal, too. So, I think it fits the site. If you take the action, which, per staff suggestion, you might likely do, I would hope there's a way for the use permit to continue with an annual review, so that we don't have to pay another $6,000-plus just to come back to have it reviewed every year. That's what it costs to come back, because we have to make a new application. If you make it a yearly basis, truly as it says, and can be reviewed on a yearly basis by coming back and saying, "Have there been any problems? Have there been any sign problems? Have there been other type things?" That at least lets them operate and recover some of the money that they put in for handicap accessibility and electrical lighting and electrical stuff to the units. They are here to speak, but I'd like to answer any questions you may have before the public hearing closes, so I can respond.
Any questions for Richard? Okay, maybe later. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's John Bowers. I'm the owner of Ideal Homes. Thank you for your time. I think the word "permanent" is going to throw everybody off here. We know it's not permanent. It's a temporary structure. Like Richard said, we only have it for a month-to-month basis until, at some point, they do develop the property into something bigger and better. But, for the time being, it's benefited our company tremendously. The traffic that we've been able to walk through the house and educate the public on what affordable housing looks like now. You know, everybody stereotypes mobile homes. They have a vision of, you know, their grandma's trailer back in the day. These homes have, you know, come a lot further. We're able to take the customers from our design room and take them out to the house, and they can actually walk through it, touch, feel it, get a better sense of what manufactured homes are today. We did have a sign issue, which Ryan and I, we've worked out. It was just letting people know that we're open. A lot of people thought it was just a, you know, they didn't know what, when we were open, how to see the house. Even though our office is literally next door, they still would drive by, and we've advertised a lot in the newspaper to let people know that we are open from 9:00 to 6:00 every day. But, we needed some sign help. And even the sign could be on a year-to-year basis, too. But, it's just to let people know that we are open, stop in, come take a look. So, do you guys have any questions for me?
There any questions? Not right now, but maybe later. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to speak? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Sam?
Yeah, thank you. I just had a question to staff after hearing those presentations. The staff was opposed to a, just a regular conditional use permit because it's not the highest and best use. But, that, since it's a rental, the property owner would dictate when this use would be eliminated, and some other higher and better use would be proposed. This permit, if we did allow it, would not be controlling between the operator and the private property owner. Is that right?
Correct. That would be between the property owner and the leasing, yeah.
Okay. And so, then, I mean, with that being the case, is that the only reason you were proposed, then, to the monument sign? Because of the assumption that, well, it's only going to be a temporary use? In other words, it was only going to be extended on an annual basis? And if we were to grant a permanent conditional use permit, would your recommendation concerning the monument sign be different?
Well, I think the thought, from staff's point of view, for the monument sign was, we have one business that's allowed, you know, wall sign, monument sign, and this particular display or model is part of that business. So, having additional signs for a business didn't seem appropriate. It seemed like they have their monument sign, their wall sign, and just throwing another sign out there for just the model didn't seem appropriate in terms of following our sign ordinance.
Does my follow-up? Does the sign ordinance prohibit multiple signs, more than one sign, on any given business or property? It does?
If you're on a corner, you're allowed to have signs that face each corner on the street. But, generally, you're allowed one sign per business.
Okay. So, they could potentially, I mean, if they wanted to limit, if they're only allowed one sign, they could, maybe if they chose, "Okay, we want the monument sign", they could come back for a permit for that, get rid of their other signs? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I mean, are you talking about doing a monument sign on the Grimes' property versus on the property that their office is on?
Well, I assume that the only thing in front of us right now is the application for the monument sign, which is on the Grimes' property.
Right.
They already have their business office sign.
Exactly.
And it looks like they have a sign that's actually posted on the model home. Or is that...
They have a banner permit that has a...
Right.
Yes.
And they have that. But, you're saying that the complication is that an owner can only have one sign under our ordinance?
Well, the way I'm looking at this, and I think the way that Susan and I looked at it was, this is a business, this is one business, and this is a model that's part of that one business. And if it were a totally separate building on the Grimes' property, a different business, then having a monument sign out there would be fine. But, because it's really just an extension of the business that's already there in that office space that already has a sign, we didn't think having another sign for this model home would be appropriate.
All right. Thanks.
One other way of looking at this in relation to whether it's a permanent CUP, and I'm certainly sensitive to the issue of the cost of coming back before this body on an annual basis. But, one of the equations that private property owners go through when they make a decision about what they're going to do with their property is, is obviously, the financial calculations of how much money is the property making today, and how much could it make into the future, and how much would it cost for me to get there? And so, to some degree, if the city is committed to seeing or wants to see change down the road on the Grimes' property, giving a regular CUP for this use takes that tool away from a future city council. In other words, if the property's making money, and albeit I'm not, I don't anticipate it's making a whole lot in rent right now, obviously, if it was, it may affect the equation. It may not, but it could affect the equation potentially if they didn't have the ability to continue operating this temporary use. I'm not sure if I adequately explained myself, but it is, it's one small tool in the toolkit. And frankly, it may not bend the curve. But, I just wanted to put that out there as another way to think about it.
Yeah, I think I understand that. But, let's, I mean, it sounds like you were, there's an ability that even if we put it on an annual review, that we could waive the application fee for that?
I was going to mention, I think that's a good idea, and I completely agree, is that instead of having, you know, your application intake fee and a deposit and all of that, basically, you know, this is, coming back before council isn't going to take a lot of staff time. So, you know, a few hundred dollars probably would cover the staff time to bring it before you for an extension.
And if I may, Mayor? If this were to come back to us annually, what are the criteria? On what basis would we, at one point, say, "Well, it's over? You can't have that mobile home there anymore"?
Well, I mean, I think if they, you know, as we mentioned, you know, any sign violations and things like that, I mean, if they're not following any of the conditions of the approval of the use permit, then it allows for the council to not extend it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions, Dennis?
It's just time for council comment?
Yes.
I would actually like to see a set end to this. In other words, I would prefer that we grant a two-year conditional use permit, and that's the end of it. And that we do is, then we set a note to the community that this is not a permanent, they agree to it, that this is not a permanent development, it's only temporary, and that at the end of two years from this application date, that module will have to be removed from the property. And also condition that violations of our sign ordinance will require a revocation of the use permit. And that's my motion.
Is there a second? Other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, I don't have a problem with the conditional use. I think the value of the property is going to dictate what happens there. And I think we all know that it's an extremely valuable piece of property. I don't see an advantage of putting restrictions on the tenant. He's on a month-to-month, which means that should that property owner decide that they want to do something which we would like them to do with that property, they're going to be out of there right away. I don't see the advantage of having them come and renew the fees. I would support waiving the fees. And I don't know, I mean, we all can agree that it's not the best use for the property, but in the time being, it's there. I think the situation is going to take care of itself. I'm trying not to tie our hands, that's the thing. And I don't want to be harsh on the property owner. I mean, it's generating a business. I think it's going to be short-lived at best. I like the direction that Sam was going. I think I'd be more favorable to support, you know, the conditional use. And the reason we have a conditional use is so they don't do the sign violations. You know, it's, we don't want it to be a nuisance. You know, you know what the rules are, follow the rules, and we'll be willing to waive the fees. And I would rather support a motion with something like that.
Are you making a motion, then?
I wasn't. I was just, I wanted to have some, I didn't have a chance to comment, and the motion came up, so I wanted to put in my feedback. You had indicated something. I mean, I'd be willing to make a motion that we give a conditional use permit and let them, you know, we already, the sign, the sign is not allowed because it's the same property. We're being consistent. And I'd be okay with waiving the fees and establishing some nominal amount, whatever it is, for review. That would be my motion.
Can I get clarification on the motion? Because you mentioned granting a, you mean a reviewable conditional use permit? Because then you referred to having it come back for review.
Well, clarify this for me, Ryan. You had mentioned that, you know, it's not necessarily come back necessarily for us, I mean, we'd come back to the council, but it would not take a lot of staff time to prepare whatever that document was.
Yeah, I mean, you can approve the use permit outright, and it doesn't need to come back to council on a yearly basis, and they don't need to pay any fees. And it's just going to be there until the property owner decides to move forward, or, you know, that's an option. Another option is, similar to what you did last year, is let's bring it back on a yearly basis and give it an extension, and, you know, do what we're doing tonight, again, with minimal fees.
That would be my proposal. Bring it back on a yearly basis with minimal fees.
Is there a second to that motion?
Well, let me, I'd like to make some comments, and then, you know, and maybe we can ultimately land there. But, I guess I'm just kind of questioning why we're requiring this business owner to come back to us annually, and so that, one, we can either influence the transaction between two private parties, the business owner and the landowner, and trying to exact some results there that we don't have any control over, nor should, I think, we attempt to influence in some way. Let them work it out. To me, the fundamental question is, is this an adequate and appropriate use for this property? Now, I'll tell you, initially, I was rather skeptical. Actually, I think I voted against it. So, and he probably remembers that. But, I think over the time that I've seen it, and really looking at it, and looking at it compared to what it was before, to me, it is an improvement. This is actually nicer-looking than the building that your office is in. I mean, we're looking at the back of that building. And so, and I'm not, and if we just say, "It's gone in two years, Dennis", well, then what is it going to become? You know, what it was before, basically, kind of a dirt mound over there. And so, I think if we have a conditional use, to me, it is a suitable, and right now, it's the highest and best use. I don't think it has landscaping. If we wanted to maybe ask for more, maybe that's appropriate. But, I think that we should just grant them a conditional use permit, say it's, you know, it's there, let them run their business until, you know, the property, the property owner decides then to move forward. And that's going to be dictating and controlling, since they only have a rental position on it. And so, I think that, to me, the fundamental question is, what kind of conditional uses do we want to ask? Certainly about following our sign ordinances. If they're only allowed to have one, then they're only allowed to have one. That's our ordinance. They have to play by the same rules. But, let's not keep having them come back. If they somehow violate the conditions, then maybe we can say, "Then it's revoked on that basis." And so, that's maybe what I would propose.
That was the only reason I wanted them to come back, was if there was a problem, there was a history. Seems like it's been corrected, but the only reason for coming back was it was a conditional use.
Yeah, I assume that those could be built in to get to the conditional use permit, that, you know, if they... That, you know, if there was a violation, violation of the sign ordinance, that the permit could be revoked, or it would be subject to review and come back to the council at that time?
That, yeah. The latter.
Okay, the latter, yeah, so.
The latter is fine.
Yeah, put all the particular restrictions in there that, that staff feels we need. But let's, I think, let's stop having this, you know, business owner come back and worry about whether he's going to be able to continue.
I'm totally fine with that.
Okay.
So are you going to second the motion?
Well, no, his motion included an annual review, and I'm, I'm just saying.
No, it no longer contains that.
Okay, if it doesn't, then I'll second that motion.
Any last comments from the applicant? Or the applicant's representative?
The comment that confuses me, I'm not opposing your motion, I agree with it. The sign issue does concern me because it is a structure on a separate piece of property. It isn't the property next door, both owned by the same company, is the confusing thing, but they are two separate parcels. And that's why, as a planner, I thought the monument sign meant the city's ordinances, but I've been wrong before, so.
And just one more thing. We would be willing to take the sign off the front of our building to get the monument sign. That's, it's just important to us. So if, going back to the one sign, we would remove the, the main sign on the building for the monument sign.
I think you can do that now, can't you?
Are you referring to take the, the sign you have on your office?
That's facing Bay Avenue now.
Correct. Yeah, okay. And then putting them on it.
Well, if the limitation is, is the number of signs in our ordinance, and, and if you make that choice to reduce it to the one monument sign, to me, it seems like then it would comply with our ordinance, so.
Well, the current, the current office building has a multi-tenant monument sign, correct?
Not on that, though.
You're not on that? So then you just have?
When we applied originally, you could either have the sign on the front of the building or on the monument sign.
Wall sign.
And we chose the, the wall sign.
Okay.
But then also, could you define for me what a, a corner lot is?
Well, it's on the corner of two streets.
Okay.
So, so I, I think the issue that we as a planning department have is that the Grimes property is a separate piece of property. There currently isn't a distinguishable, separate use on that property for, to have its own sign. This is basically, I'm looking at it as a display for an existing business that's on the neighboring property that has a sign. So they can have, so that office can have a, a wall sign, or it can have a sign on the existing monument sign that's already on that property, but at this point, we couldn't support a monument sign on the, on the separate Grimes property.
But I understand them saying that they would remove the sign, or they don't, they're not on the sign, or they have a sign on the, the actual office building?
I believe they have a wall sign on their office building, and that office building also has a, a multi-tenant monument sign that has a bunch of small, you know, I think it advertises, you know, half a dozen of the tenants in that building. I think what they want to have is a separate monument sign on the Grimes property that only advertises the Ideal Homes.
Well, in essence, they are a corner lot. They have a freeway on-ramp on one side, or off-ramp. It's roads are road. Let's get through, let's get through the use permit and then come back to sign if we're going to do that, but I.
Okay, so we.
Well, I think we're close here. I think they're asking for one sign, and I'm confused here.
They have one sign.
Because they're willing to take down the one sign that they have, is what I'm hearing, to add the monument sign. And I'm confused as to.
Because Ryan's saying, this is not, this is not the business. This is a display. It's not a business where people go in and.
We allow every business to have one sign. And by not, by if they're taking down the one sign they have, they're not invoking that right to have that one sign. So I'm confused.
The problem that you face, and I understand Ryan's dilemma here, is that there are a lot of centers that have monument signs, and in cases, they don't all list all of the tenants that are inside the building, and it, it's a little problematic. For example, let's say at the Nob Hill Center, that one of the interior tenants decided, they said, "Hey, we'll forego the cleaning business," for example, at Nob Hill, they're not listed on the Nob Hill monument sign. And I suspect that you would look rather critically at an application to put another monument sign out in front of Nob Hill, advertising the cleaning business just because they agreed to take down. So I think that's the hesitancy you're hearing, is that there's already a monument sign that's sort of advertising the businesses that are in, I'm sorry, I don't know the, the name of the building that, that Ideal Homes is in, and then to sort of go and add another, it just, it's feeling a little bit like a slippery slope, and that's, I think, the dilemma you're hearing from staff.
And as well as being on a separate piece of property completely, that's, that's the hesitation.
Well, to me, yeah, but to me, that would seem, that would be the exception that would distinguish it from the cleaners and the Nob Hills, because that's not a separate parcel. Okay? Because we could say, yes, you can't have multiple signs on a single parcel. But if you had two separate parcels, because theoretically, they could be a whole separate business on that Grimes property, and at some point, there will be, there will be signs there. Okay? We can assure you, we wouldn't be able to stop it as long as they complied with our signed ordinance. To me, the separate parcel is the distinction, and would be the reason why maybe it should be allowed. And especially, I mean, and also, if, even if property owners had multiple parcels, and we could say, "Well, you know what? You can't have a sign in front of each one of your parcels. You can only have, choose." Okay? And it seems that this is the situation here, is he's willing to choose. Now, I understand there's a separate monument sign, and they've just chose not to be on that monument sign for the office building, but there is a separate parcel here, and so it wouldn't seem to be burdensome to limit the signs to discrete parcels and one per discrete business. And that would be the distinction that would allow this to happen, but that would give us sufficient protection so that we don't have a proliferation of signs. So that's.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the future and to not bring it back for review annually, only, only if there are problems. Anything else to the motion? I'm not going to support it because I didn't support it last time, and I still feel the same way, that it's a display. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Or, I'm sorry. Opposed? No.
No.
Oh, two to two. Do you want to make a substitute motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll vote for the motion if you give me a sunset clause.
Is anyone interested?
I don't want an ongoing use permit on that property with a non, it's non-conforming use.
Dennis, what if we went to an annual review?
I'll tell you what I accept. I would accept a, a two-year deal, and then they can come up and reapply on, in two years if they want to continue it. But I want a sunset, that would be the sunset clause right there. So they would not be required next year to have a review, but they need, if they need to continue it, they have to come for a new application for it. And them knowing that that is, this would be a sunset clause to this application. I'll accept that.
Would you be willing to waive the fee?
For the first time?
After the two years, and they came back and applied?
I'd be willing to waive the fee for, well, you got a continuation, they don't need a fee, huh? That would be two years. No, I think they have to, they'd have to play it in two years.
Is there a second to Dennis's motion?
I think for the sake of discussion, I'll second it.
Any other discussion on it? So it would be a two-year permit?
Yes.
And then no fees, no fees the next year, but then they would have to come back and pay fees and apply the next year?
They'd have to pay.
That's not really a sunset, though.
Well, it's a sunset because the application, the use permit expires, and they'd have to come back in for a new application. And they'd come back in front of us for that, two years from now.
And I think the fees could be, and when they do, if they come back, I think the fees could be fairly minimal. It wouldn't, we wouldn't require the intake fee, it would just be enough to cover staff time to bring it back to council.
Okay. Well, this is a new application.
How much would that be?
I mean, noticing's 173 and some couple, couple hours of staff time, so maybe $400 or something like that.
Okay. With that stipulation, I'd be willing to support that. Is you okay with that, Dennis?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, motion carries. Got two years. Good luck.
With regard to the sign?
Yeah, what about the sign?
The sign.
What about the sign? Right.
Oh, well, I'll make a motion that we allow the single sign for this business, single monument sign. They can make the choice of whether they have it on their office or on, on this parcel.
I'll second that motion, but it follows to the same, same two-year regulation that we.
Yeah, understood, I mean, yeah, it's understood that it goes along with the two-year.
So they'll have to renew that at that time, too.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
Thank you.
Madam, madam mayor, I also did want to just acknowledge Ryan. Ryan Bane has taken a position with the City of Santa Cruz. Ryan has had a good run here with the City of Capitola for, how many years has it been?
Next month would have been 10.
Next month would have been 10, so almost 10 years.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You're going to miss these nice comm meetings.
Yeah.
With, with public comments short usually, and not all the commotion that, that Santa Cruz has, but, but good luck. It'll be, I hope it's a great career move, and I hope you enjoy it, and you'll be working with great people.
Thank you. I've really enjoyed my time here, and it's been a great experience and formed some great relationships, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for all your good work.
Ryan, you'd be great for the city, and you'll be tough to replace.
Thank you.
Good luck, Ryan.
Thanks.
Okay, other staff comments?
So the only other thing is, is we are, I'm not sure if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, we'd have the hearing about the website update. Staff has looked into all of the items that were, council called out for researching about the website update, and it looks like a great opportunity for us. So we plan to form a staff task force to help with the transition over to the new website. That would include review of options, sort of some layout. I anticipate probably maybe six meetings over three months, and I'm looking for any council volunteers that would be interested. And it sounds like Councilmember Termini has indicated an interest, and if anyone else is interested. I can only get one more, though, because of the Brown Act. So if anyone else is interested?
Website?
Not an area of expertise, though.
Okay. Well, we'll work with Councilmember Termini, and, you know, before we roll it out, we'll bring a preview in here and show you guys what it looks like.
Great, thank you.
Great. Any other, any other announcements? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thanks, everybody, for all your good work.